I will call the July 13, 2009, meeting of the Anchorage Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Would the Secretary call the roll, please?
Nancy Pease.
Here.
Jim Frederick.
Here.
Connie Yoshimura. Tony Jones.
Here.
Arthur Eishem. John Weddleton.
Here.
Thomas Wang.
Here.
Bruce Phelps.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Both Mr. Eishem and Ms. Yoshimura are excused this evening. Before we continue on with the rest of the items on our agenda, you'll notice that your screens look a little different tonight, and I'm going to ask our staff person here that assists us with Greenwich us to just say a few words about how this new part works.
... aiming back to something that was just a new merit paid in for it. The major thing that we gained, and I hope you already can find your name slightly in there, all alphabetically logged in, specifically if you might have seen parts, maybe to be hundred four times, or perhaps I didn't get it right together, you kind of need to do it. If you got anything on that way, if you're working in how old, make sure you know that you can make any motion, promoting if you're sitting on the board. So it would be pretty important to go in there. We've been going through the period, and you can do it there, and you can do it there, but it's all...
Okay. The main thing is to remember to use your buttons to, you know, request to speak or to request to make a motion, and a second to motion, and I think we'll be okay. And the other thing I want to remind everyone tonight is that tonight is the first night that Ms. Graves is here solo, her first night as our official new secretary, and we do welcome you, Ms. Graves. And I'm going to ask all commissioners to speak slowly and clearly when making motions. No sausage making tonight, and we want to be able to make sure that she's able to easily record them in the record. And I know she will appreciate it, and so will I. So, having said that, we'll now go back to our regular agenda. Yes?
Question came up, how do you view documents? And that may not be quite as intuitive as it looks, because you're on the agenda, you're on item XYZ, the documents are listed below, you need to click on the document, and then down below there's a button that says document. You click on that, that will actually open that document up for reading.
Okay. Thank you. All right, back to our agenda now. The next item on our agenda are minutes for April 13, June 1, and June 8. Motion to approve would be in order.
I move to approve.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frederick. I'm waiting for a second. Thank you, Mr. Wang.
How do you?
Are there any changes or corrections?
Would you hear?
Okay, hearing none. Are there any objections?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, those minutes are approved. Disclosures, in Mr. Eishem's absence, I have asked Mr. Wang to dispense with disclosures this evening.
Thank you. Starting with Commissioner Pease, do you have anything to disclose?
Just that on the consent agenda, I was not present for item 2009-024, so I won't be voting on that particular consent agenda item.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Frederick?
Nothing.
Commissioner Jones?
On item D4, in the consent agenda, the time extension for AWU, I will be abstaining from that because I've previously been excused from everything to do with AWU.
Okay.
We'll still have a quorum.
Yes. Commissioner Weddleton?
No disclosures.
Commissioner Phelps?
No.
And I have no disclosures.
Okay, thank you. So that brings us back to our consent agenda. Motion for approval would be in order. Thank you, Ms. Pease, and thank you for seconding, Mr. Frederick. Are there any items to be pulled? And you don't need to pull four on my behalf, because I will just abstain from that, and the secretary can so note it in the record. Any items to pull? Hearing none. Are there any objections to the consent agenda? Hearing none, those items are approved. And I abstain from D4. You will note that. Thank you. Okay, we are now at our regular agenda, and before we get started with the hearings, I just do want to announce that case number G1, which was a petition by the municipality of Anchorage to rezone property on McCray Road 2B3, General Business District. That case has been postponed until August 3. And case number G5, where the petitioner is Dean Weidner, and that was a request to rezone property from R3 to R0, and it's located on East 42nd Avenue. That case has been postponed to August 3, 2009 as well. That leaves on our agenda cases G2, where Clifford and Sheila Stratton are the petitioners, and case G3, Alaska Railroad Corporation, and G4, where C&amp;T Construction are the petitioners. So we will go ahead with our hearing on case number G2 and case number 2009-087. The petitioners are Clifford and Sheila Stratton. The request is for zoning conditional use for a bed and breakfast of five guest rooms or more, and the site location is 11651 Hillside Drive. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Sixty public hearing notices were mailed for this item. We received one letter in opposition to the request citing noise and traffic concerns. The property is a legal-sized R6 lot. It has had a single-family home on it for several years, and sequentially through the years, the owners of the house have added bed and breakfast guest rooms. They started with three guest rooms, which are permitted accessory use. They added a fourth a couple of years later. That required an administrative site plan review, and tonight they're asking for a fifth bed and breakfast guest room, and the fifth guest room figures the conditional use review. The house was built in '72, and the bed and breakfast applications began in '03, and then in '04 they added again, and now in '09 we're here tonight. There are no specific standards for a bed and breakfast under the conditional use review, so we use the general standards, beginning on page 004. Furters the goals and policies of the Comprehensive Development Plan. There aren't any specific goals and policies regarding this kind of commercial development in a residential area, so all we can say for it is that it does meet it because a bed and breakfast is allowed by either site plan review or conditional use in a residential zoning district. Standard B, conforms to the standards of this title. Again, that's met. There are no specific requirements, so the applicant must meet the general standards, which are these four items. Item C, will be compatible with the existing and planned uses in the surrounding neighborhood. This standard at present is only partially met. The uses in this general area are single-family homes on fairly large lots, lots ranging anywhere from one-half to three acres in size. The subject property is one acre. The brochure, and this is the reason this standard is only partially met, concerning compatibility with existing and planned uses. The brochure for the bed and breakfast indicates that you can host certain functions, weddings, conferences, mini-retreats, and so forth, at the bed and breakfast. These are commercial and semi-commercial type operations, which are not allowed in a residential zoning district, even as part of the conditional use. Standard D, under the general standards, will not have a permanent negative impact on the items listed below, graded than anticipated from permitted development, pedestrian and vehicular traffic circulation and safety. This use has been in effect for many years. The property is served by a circular driveway onto Hillside Drive. There appears to be parking for at least nine motor vehicles, for at least nine automobiles. We'll need to see an amended site plan with all of those parking spaces dimensioned, and then have a sign-off from the traffic engineer, but it does appear that standard is met. D2, the demand for and availability of public services and facilities. This property is up on the hillside. There is no municipal water or sewer available, and in the department report, you will see and note that because this is a commercial use, the Department of Environmental Conservation will review the proposal. That's not exactly correct anymore. There is a funding issue with DEC, and they will not be monitoring or enforcing the rules for commercial-type operations when fewer than 25 people are served by the facility. So this week, we're starting discussions with the municipal onsite services, and we're including applicants as they come in as to how we're going to handle these types of reviews when the level of service is above what the municipality has traditionally reviewed, but now falls under this threshold of 25 people, where DEC will begin its review. At this point, we can say that that standard does appear to be met. There's not actually a change in size of the bed and breakfast. One of the rooms is simply being converted to a guest bedroom for the B&amp;B, and as part of their 2004 addition of the third bedroom, or excuse me, the fourth bedroom, the applicants did submit paperwork from their own engineer to DEC and DNR regarding wells and septic systems, and those systems do appear adequate for this one additional guest room. There are no recorded complaints for the use as a B&amp;B onsite. I checked with code enforcement going back to when the first B&amp;B license was issued in '03. The only notice we have is, or excuse me, the only complaint we have is the one public hearing notice in response to the advertising. Finally, standard four, the maintenance of compatible and efficient development patterns and land use intensities. That really isn't going to change. The footprint of the house doesn't change. We're just talking about converting one room that was previously used by the family will now be available as a bed and breakfast unit. The department does recommend approval, as the standards are either fully met or partially met, subject to the three conditions below at the bottom of page six, specifically pointing out number two, that we'll need a parting plan submitted to the traffic engineer. Number three, we're going to need the appropriate documentation from the applicant's private engineer submitted to the municipality, as opposed to submitting it to the Department of Environmental Conservation. And condition number four on page seven, that commercial uses, such as renting the property out for weddings, conferences, and so forth, are commercial uses that are not allowed as part of a bed and breakfast in a residential zoning district. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Other questions of staff at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, Ms. Pease?
Yes, through the chair. Mr. Barrett, given that the DEC will not be reviewing the water and septic for this size of operation, how would the department's recommended condition three be reworded to reflect that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Pease, excuse me, I was a little bit too broad. DNR will continue to monitor for the availability of water. DEC will continue to monitor septic. It's DEC in their evaluation of this as a Class C well, where the gap will now be. So the condition would be reworded... Commissioner Pease, actually, because DEC still would be part of the review for the septic system, I think if you give the condition a broad reading, we'll just submit the appropriate documents to the two departments, depending on whether it is well-related or septic system-related.
Thank you. Mr. Phelps?
I have two questions. One is in terms of the types of uses that are allowed in this conditional use. My understanding is that the types of general commercial uses that are currently in the code in this location are not the problems of this conditional use, correct? In other words, the conditional use does not deal with that issue, is not allowed in the code?
Madam Chair, Mr. Phelps, that's correct. Those are not considered to be bed and breakfast-related uses.
Second question I had is on the item number three that we're just now discussing, and the question I have is that that gap you're referring to, the fact that there is a gap, does that create a representative problem, do you think?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Phelps, it's going to depend... I can't answer that. It's going to depend on how much support we get from the Onsite Systems Division, how much time and manpower they'll have to devote to this.
Another final question, Mr. Barrett. Do you intend to take this particular item to that particular group inside the municipality that can actually review it?
Commissioner Phelps, would you repeat that, please?
You indicated that there's no group, or maybe the existing group, that reviews Onsite Systems for the municipality. The question I have is, is it your intention to bring this particular item to that entity for review of this proposal in terms of the Onsite System?
Commissioner Phelps, yes, it is. I've already been in discussions with them.
Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? If so, push your request to speak button, please. Okay, apparently not. I will go ahead, and I'm going to open up the public hearing at this time, but first I'd like to explain the rules. Petitioners and their representatives are allowed a total of 10 minutes for their presentation. The petitioners are allowed to reserve a portion of their 10 minutes for rebuttal time. People representing a group, such as a community council, are allowed five minutes for their presentation, and people speaking as individuals are allowed three minutes. If you have documents you'd like to submit into the record, whether it be photographs or a written statement, whatever it might be, you can just bring it forward and give it to me, and I'll hand it to the secretary for inclusion in the record. And with that, I will open the public hearing and invite the petitioner or their representative to come forward at this time. Good evening.
Good evening.
And could you please state your name for the record, sir?
Cliff Stratton.
Okay. Yes, sir.
And I'm listening, I don't have much to add. Let us talk about the sewage system. That is a bio cycle and is checked every three months. We pay basically $100 a month or every quarter for that to be checked and certified, and that has been done ever since we've been in the property, which has been the last seven and a half years. I don't know what makes a difference on that. I submitted that, and it is in the paperwork. The other issue that came up was, you know, when one complained, I talked to him yesterday. I don't know what happened. There was a couple of people had a drunken ball in front of his house, and I don't know this instance. I'm not sure it was from our place. We have removed people a couple of times. We do not do wedding events. We years ago did talk to, or two years ago, talked to the mayor with a group, he then worked as an association, just seeing what was allowed, but wondering what was going to be titled, and found it was not, and so we do not do any of those kind of events. I guess that's about it, except for the fact we just have, the house is 6,000 square feet, it has six baths and six bedrooms, and we just wanted to make that extra bedroom into another bed and breakfast room. And we didn't do it before because we just didn't have the need at that time to convert that room, so that's about it.
Okay, thank you. And let's see if there's some questions from commissioners. Okay, Mr. Weddleton?
Mr. Stratton, on weddings and so on, I'm over here.
Oh, yeah, okay.
How you can look at any of this. Your flyer says weddings, conferences, and mini-retreats. Do you still distribute this?
Yeah, we moved up here seven and a half years ago from Oregon. My wife is from Scotland, just a little background, and originally her home was a bed and breakfast. We were used to bed and breakfast, you know, over the nation and actually other parts of the world, and just we're thinking in that direction. That brochure goes back seven years, and one of the things we're doing right now is having a website redesigned, and I should have changed that brochure sometime back. I did correct even on the website that way, and so that's where it is. We just originally were thinking that way, and actually even took that to the city with the Bed and Breakfast Association, and that found out from reading Title 21 that that didn't happen, so...
So have you done weddings, but now you don't?
I have done a few in the past, yes. I am a pastor and do weddings services. That doesn't mean we would do wedding events, and I think that's the difference. I mean, if a couple, yeah, if a couple came to me and had, you know, some family with them to do a wedding, as a pastor, I would do a wedding, but that doesn't mean I would have a reception or an event with a wedding. I guess, you know, weddings usually are big events, and we do not do that.
Well, at least, I guess, a question for staff then, would even something, so you're talking a dozen people might show up, the bride and groom and...
Yeah, I mean, whether they're all staying in the house, if you had a bride and groom, or a witness, and maybe parents or something along, because I am a licensed minister and have done that, and I guess I'm just saying that that is something I would think would be proper.
Where do you draw the line on that?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Weddleton, I would think we'd agree with Mr. Stratton if 12 people, or whatever number of couples it is, rents all of their rooms, and a couple of them decide to get married while they're there, who's going to know? So where would we draw the line? I think if it became a parking or a noise problem.
Through the chair, also, if there are advertisements to that effect, too. In other words, make it a commercial nature to draw that type of an attraction, to draw that type of a business, like a Wedding Chapel type of business, that type of situation. But if it just happens to be because of the situation, and because the gentleman is also a minister, that this might happen, unless it became a big parking, a neighborhood issue or a commercial endeavor on purpose, it would be just an occasional thing, I don't think would be an issue.
Yeah, we don't have advertising that way, and just, but I mean, because of the association, the Bed and Breakfast Association, we know each other, and sometimes we'll pass information that way, would be the only thing.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, just a moment, let's see if there's other questions. Are there other questions from commissioners? Apparently not.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And you do have some rebuttal time left, if people have, at the end, if you want to come back up. Is there anyone else that would like to testify on this matter? Anyone at all? Okay, there is no one. Mr. Stratton, did you have anything else that you wanted to say?
No.
Nope, okay. Then I will close the hearing, and the matter rests with the commission. Mr. Phelps has made the motion, and it's been seconded by Mr. Weddleton. Mr. Phelps, would you articulate your motion, please?
Yeah, in the case of the conditional use to allow a bed and breakfast to have five guest units in the R6 district, and as more specifically described on page G2, I would recommend for the approval of that other requested conditional use for a five-guest-room bed and breakfast, subject to the conditions specified by staff on pages six and seven of the packet.
Okay. Would you care to speak to your motion, Mr. Phelps?
Certainly. This to me seems to be fairly straightforward. The type of use we're talking about does not involve high trip generation. We're not talking about changes to the structure. We're going from essentially four bedrooms to a fifth bedroom. We've heard that they have had good maintenance on their existing system right now, and it seems like their review process is either to occur or going to occur that would deal with the onsite issue, if there is one. For those reasons, I would support the motion.
Is there further discussion on the motion?
Well, I'd like to just address the issue on the weddings, that, you know, I support this with the assurance that there would not be advertising and support for large wedding parties at the bed and breakfast.
Okay. Any further comments?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, I would just add that for locations that are served by onsite, there is often a concern of whether the onsite is adequate, and we did hear in testimony tonight that the bio cycle septic system is checked every three months by a paid inspector, and there haven't been any problems or complaints or concerns expressed by the neighbors regarding the well and septic capacity, so although the commercial use is expanding a bit, it appears as if this site can handle the use.
Okay, anything further?
I would just note that with regard to activities that have taken place in the past, this business has been in operation for some time, and I think the absence of people coming out to testify with objection to this increase in use says a lot, and so I will be supporting this request.
Is there any objection to the motion?
Is there any objection to the motion?
Hearing none. This motion is approved unanimously. Moving on, the next case on our agenda is 2009-97, it's case G3. The petitioner is Alaska Railroad Corporation for a Site Plan Review for a Public Facility. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. With this request, there were no public hearing notices returned. The railroad is requesting a site plan approval for the sites surrounding the freight shed. The approval for the core and shell of the freight shed itself, the structural part, was approved by the Commission on January 5th of 2009. The project background is that the railroad is planning to renovate the existing freight shed inside into a commercial mixed-use center. After completion of the project, it will have office space and retail shops in a historic building. The site itself is located on the east of the A Street overpass, north of First Avenue and west of Cordova Street. The Ship Creek Design Review Board, of which myself and one of the Commissioners, Commissioner Isham, are a member of, as required by the PC ordinance, the SCDRB unanimously approved the freight shed, uh, share project, basically the building itself, on May 27th, 2008. Again, the Commission approved it on January 5th, 2009. The SCDRB unanimously approved the shed site, which is before you now, the actual ground work itself, on April 27th of 2009. The site approval was subject to three conditions of approval, which, we may only do compliance with the plans as submitted, except otherwise condition, return of the plans to the board, which is required by the ordinance for final approval, as modified by the Commission. And the principal condition to resolve is, the need to resolve the ability to modify the parking areas to achieve a wider sidewalk with pedestrian amenities adjacent to the north side of West First Avenue. If you look at page two of the staff packet, that sort of gives you the overview of the whole site, it's in three sheets because of the, it's a long, narrow site. What we're looking at with this is three parking areas, basically. The freight shed takes up the middle of the site. You'll see on page two, on the left side is the west parking lot. On the left-hand side of that page, the other side of that page is the east and the south parking lots with the shed in the building, and there are more enhanced detailed landscape sheets that are later on in the packet, and the petitioner can also refer to those as As opposed to the, when we reviewed the freight shed building itself, a lot of the design standards in the district do not relate to, there are some that relate to the structural components, and that was reviewed last time. This one is a little different. This one, we applied, the design guidelines is related to site improvements, which I have been gone through in detail in this. The part and actually that whole plan is included in your packet for your reference. The intent of the district does state that the mix of styles does not so much set an architectural style of the district as it suggests an approach, and not so much suggesting a standard, but rather promotes an innovative and economic use of elements. In this freight shed project, when we reviewed it according to that intent, it is a hybrid in that it is not only not in a development, but in a redevelopment and a reuse, but it's also on a site with a lot of constraints. Some of them are considered the irregular lot shape, the existing structure, the existing available areas for parking area, as well as the existence of the rail tracks on the north, the multiple lease uses of the site, which includes seasonal tour bus operations for loading and loading of customers from trains, and the longer-term potential of the future upgrade for West First Avenue, and the impacts that strict applications of the guidelines would require at this time. The department does find that the improvements, in general, meet the intent of the guidelines. They do not meet a lot of the guidelines, but again, these are guidelines only, and due to their site constraints, strict adherence is not possible at this time. However, to come closer to compliance, the department does agree with the SCDRB findings that the petitioner should review alternative measures of faking pedestrian and landscaping improvements to the west parking area as noted in the site plans. The rationale for that is because primary public access is from the west end of the site, this end will be the most visible to the public as well. And with that, the department recommends approval subject to five conditions of approval, noted on page 10 of the packet. Thank you.
Are there questions of staff at this time? Mr. Weddleton?
Thank you. Angela, or Ms. Chambers, looking at this document, I don't quite how to refer to this, there's a color picture of the, and it says freight shed context plan, and that parking looks, and the landscaping looks quite a bit different than your page two. Which one is the plan?
The plan is page two. The freight shed context plan, that color one, which I'm going to hold up real quick to make sure this is the same thing you have.
That's it.
This is the overall context plan, it's a part of the PC. It's a part of the overall PC plan, and in general, this is what they would have liked in their context plan, future development to be. But this is only an early context plan. Once the site and the site elements and some of the constraints and restrictions were played into it, it didn't quite come out this way exactly, and the petitioner's representative can speak to that further. What you are looking at is that which is included in the packet, starting on page two, is the overall landscape plan specifically. However, sheets L2 and L3 would have greater detail in L4.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And does anyone else have questions of staff? If so, push the Request to Speak button on your left side.
I have pressed it, and it says, I have requested to speak on my screen.
Huh, okay. Well, let me see what I need to do. All right, Claire, I cleared the current speaker. Could you try it one more time and see if, if not, I'll just recognize you. Well, it's not showing up here, so I will just recognize you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, I'm in roll call. Hmm. Anyhow, I will go ahead and ask my question, two questions, actually. With regard to the pedestrian connectivity, I'm still unclear on, with regard to the findings in page four of the staff write-up. It says there's little to no need for pedestrian access to the east, and I wanted to confirm whether there would ever be pedestrian access down Cordova Street. I know much farther to the south, Cordova Street, I believe, is envisioned as a pedestrian street, so I'm wondering whether there will be a connection at some point. And the other part of that question is, it's unclear to me that if there's a plinth along the south side of this building, whether that's the only pedestrian access, or whether there'll be room for bikes to progress at, proceed at street level, whether there's going to be a little shoulder or something.
Through the Chair, questions? The first one, if you look on Cordova Street, if you look at page 11, which is a site basically in the area of it, the east side, potentially there could be pedestrian access eventually up north Cordova Street to the north. It's not likely in the near future, nor is that an area where there's emphasis in this plan for, in this PC plan, for any of these pedestrian-related uses to occur, and that is not one of the focal areas for that. East first, of course, is a truck lot, and that's a really steep hill, which is really not used much at all. So on that end, there's really not any near-term need for any type of pedestrian amenities. Our concern on the amenities, for pedestrian amenities in the long-term future, one of the concerns that both Mr. Isham and I brought up at the Ship Creek Design Review Board, and at the, and also in the review of this with the department, is pedestrian amenities along West First Avenue, especially leading to the west, because there is some restrictions and concerns with the rail tracks there, that there is the strong desire for the pedestrian, to make this a pedestrian and alternative transportation mode area, to reduce the impact of cars and surface parking where possible, and to promote alternative transportation methods. Until such time as the railroad is able to eventually acquire properties to the south to be able to do further, to do West First Avenue upgrades, they're pretty much restricted at this time, and this redevelopment alone doesn't trigger any type of need to upgrade West First Avenue. If those properties are all acquired in the future, at that time, West First Avenue will be able to be widened and upgraded, and further infrastructure put in, such as any bike amenity, trail amenities, or bike paths, anything like that. Until that time, what you have is the plinth along the freight shed, and you have the sidewalk as shown on those, on those sheets and on the plans, if that answers your question.
Through the Chair, if I may, just to make sure I understand, as it says on page nine, the timing of West First Avenue upgrade is dependent on the ability to assemble properties on the south side of the road. So this project won't involve any pedestrian amenities anywhere along First Avenue, is that correct, between Cordova Street and C Street, A Street?
Through the Chair, not on the south side, just on the north side. On what the north side, they are, trying to find a better sheet, if you, I think page, page six starts to show it a little better. Page six, which, oh, excuse me, it's not page six, page 61, shows sheet L2, which is the northwest parking lot, which is on the west side of the building, on the north side of West First Avenue, it shows you the sidewalk, and how it connects up into the pedestrian plinth. There is the sidewalk there, and then when you look at the next two sheets, you'll see the northeast parking lot, where it comes down off the plinth, you can see that area. The primary pedestrian access from the plinth is leading from the plinth over to North C Street, not over to Cordova, and that has to do with the site constraints and trying to combine a multitude of things with these, a multitude of items with these design guidelines, using an existing site. It was pretty much impossible with these site constraints to get out of the desired, meet all the desired guidelines at one time, including landscaping, pedestrian amenities, and also to deal with the multi-use of the east parking lot especially. The east parking lot is the parking lot where the tour buses also go in, and have a lot of turning and maneuvering requirements. Thank you.
Any further questions of staff? Okay. Apparently not. I will open the public hearing and invite the petitioner or its representative to come forward. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, my name is Paul Farnsworth, I'm with Alaska Railroad. We have fully reviewed the staff recommendations, and we'd like to talk about elements two and three on here, and we might just reserve our time for any questions and rebuttal time. After we submitted the original plans, we actually, and the Ship Creek Review Board, we went back and modified the parking areas to get a wider sidewalk on first, so we have met that condition, and what you're being handed out now, how would like to redo the corner? Part of what we're doing down there is going to be improvements to C Street and in that area, and we're going to actually make this match what our future plans are for the other side of North C Street, on the, on the west side of it. So other than that, we agree with staff comments, and we'll answer any questions.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Farnsworth? Mr. Weddleton?
Thanks. So looking at this, and I'm not quite sure how to refer to it, I guess the southwest corner, you're giving up a couple parking spots and putting a little semicircle with benches and so on, is that?
Right, yeah, actually, we're giving up one parking spot, and if we had a larger picture, and it may actually be showed in your context plan, I'm not sure if it goes that far, but if you go up to Ship Avenue directly north, we have a plaza up there that's already part of the landscaping and the improvements on the north side of the track, and this is just a little piece of the same type of plaza that would be mirrored across the street on the side of C Street when we do our depot improvements and our improvements to First Avenue, on the west side of C Street. So, yeah, a little plaza with a couple of benches to sit down. It's a heavily used area, a lot of people move up and down C Street, going to the Ulu Factory, Comfort Inn, Ship Creek, when the Fisher, and stuff like that, so just give them a place to take a break.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Can you push your little Request to Speak button?
Isn't technology wonderful?
I know, we have a new system tonight, so we're in training. A refurbished system.
Okay.
Got it! Okay, Miss Peace.
Yes, through the Chair, what is the width of the sidewalk that you have now achieved per the Department's recommendation number two?
It's eight feet. We were discussing whether that back occurred or front occurred, but it's eight feet.
Okay, and eight feet all along the west parking lot up to the...
Up to the plinth?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, once you get to the plinth, it looks as if the site plans or site sketches here are a little hard for me to read, but in looking at C31, it looks as if there's steps, to me, it looks as if there's steps that go up to the plinth.
What page are we on?
I'm looking at C30 and C31 in this elongated booklet, this elongated booklet.
Page 43 in the short, in the staff packet.
Yes, there is actually a ramp and stairs that come down at that point. The ramp, the stairs are kind of a natural extension of the sidewalk, and then if you look directly above that, there's a ramp that goes up to what is an elevated sidewalk, the plinth area outside of that west corner. So it's a raised patio-like.
And how wide is the plinth?
It varies, depending on where you're at, from 12 to 15 feet.
Okay. And for people who are arriving here on bicycles, where is their bicycle parking?
The bicycle parking would probably be in front of the individual spaces, or within the tenant spaces if they're actually riding to work. Some of the people I've talked to are going to have bicycle parking within.
Within, within their rented interior space?
Yes.
Okay, what about for visitors, customers?
I don't think at this time that we have any bicycle parking planned exterior at this time.
Uh-huh. Okay, well, I guess, if I may, where might that go?
Well, the, with the plinth being that wide, I would anticipate that if there's a retail use on the west end, which isn't currently occupied, like a restaurant or something like that, that there'd be bicycle parking in that area. You would also have the entire north dock, you can walk all the way around this building at elevation, so there's lots of opportunities and places to put bike racks along the plinth and alongside the buildings.
Okay.
But we haven't anticipated any.
All right, thank you.
Okay, are there, Mr. Weddleton, are you back in the...
I'm back, I just, I might be confused on this, but, okay, so on the south side of the building, you have the plinth, and that's the raised walkway, is there also a sidewalk at road level?
No, sir.
Okay, so if you're walking along, then you would go up the steps of the ramp, beyond the level, then you would be on the level of the shops, and then you'd drop back down if you were just walking on by, is that correct?
And then you stay at elevation until the end of the building, I think, 750 feet.
Right, and then you drop back down and continue on.
On the east parking lot, that's correct, you'd come back down.
Okay, that wasn't crystal clear to me. And I would actually say on the bicycles that you should really plan on a place to put them that's not on this walking area, because just a few bikes can block your walking area quite a bit.
Right, if you, if you look at the building, this is the old freight shed, actually had receiving doors on both the north side and south side, and on the south side of the building, and this is the, when we brought the core and shell in, there are overhangs where the trucks used to back underneath them, that cause you to go out and around. So between each of these overhangs, there are actually going to be the doors on first, there's 13 doors north, 13 doors south. There's a fairly large area between these things that is naturally recessed, that we anticipate there'll be benches or landscaping, great places to put bikes, because most of the pedestrians are going to circulate outside of these entrances going into the building. So there's some natural places to put bicycle racks, once the tenancies have been determined, figure out who needs bicycle racks, because our... and figure out who needs bicycle racks because our tenants that have talked about going in here actually don't want to park their bikes outside.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
No, but the visitors might.
They might.
And the customers.
That's true.
Okay. Any further questions from commissioners?
To pursue that just a little more is, we looked at this, the building.
Yes.
And approve that. And this is, are bike racks part of the building or is it part of the site? Because I can't, I want to see a place for bicycles specifically appropriate for them because, one, they're needed. Two, if you don't have them, it says they're not welcome here. I mean, we really need to plan on bike racks or you get bicycles all over the place. And we need to send the message that yes, you should be riding your bike there. And for me, the only times I've been to this location is on my bicycle. I've never gone, and I've been here many times in this area. So people do bike here. We want a place to walk them that's not on a bench, you know, or some post.
I understand, but we're not going to, we wouldn't select a place for bicycles till we knew where they were going. For example, a tenant could come in that took twenty thousand square feet or thirty thousand square feet, and then it'd be up to the tenant to select whether the bicycle racks, you know, where their front door is because there could be any one of seven doors. So there's plenty of room to put them on the plinth up there, but we're not choosing locations until we actually figure out who's going to be living behind those doors.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Chambers?
Through the chair. Mr. Riddleton, these issues had been discussed as well in the department as well as with the SCDRB with the issue of condition three resolving the ability to provide additional pedestrian amenities and actually it should be pedestrian and other amenities or related amenities would have been more appropriate if I had worded that because that was one of those issues. There are places that could be, with the fact that the landscaping is reduced and there's a site that's very difficult to deal with, it's a matter of finding balance. And one of those things is encouraging bicycle transportation and places either at one end of the site or the other somewhere, even if we don't know who the tenants are or where. And that would be a potential place for modifying any conditions of approval. And that could be, this still has to go back to the Ship Creek Design Review Board to have a final review. And that could always be some type of a condition as well, in condition three. So that was the intent of my condition.
Thank you. I have a question now that everyone else has done. It's not so much, has to do with the east end. I used to work on Ship Creek Avenue for a number of years, so I'm kind of familiar with both Ship Creek Avenue and First Avenue. And it seems to me on that east end, particularly down around Cordova Street, that's all pretty much industrial uses down there, as I recall. And Cordova Street to the north, I think, I think like the archdiocese of Anchorage is like its second and Cordova, and then there's the hill. So I don't know that that, you know, anything needs to much happen on that east end certainly as far as people, you know, people movement. I wouldn't see that there'd be a lot of pedestrian traffic there. I think I tried driving down, and it might have been almost like a dirt road or something once, because I kind of just wound around. So it's not what I would call a people-friendly place for walking unless you really kind of like to walk in the out-of-the-way places.
Yeah. Madam Chair, that's true. Cordova is easy to get lost on even if you know where you're going. It winds up around some buildings and sneaks in on the back of a motel, and it's kind of a goofy spot to the north of first. Like you said, there's three sets of tracks. And then you've got a kind of an industrial area with some warehouses and some, some commercial vendors flooring and stuff like that. We don't see a lot of pedestrian activity happening anytime in the near future in that area. We're trying to encourage pedestrians, E Street, C Street, on down, those type of places. And that's why we're doing the primary development off of C where we're currently seeing the pedestrians, the people's segways all the time.
Now, that's where the people activity is now.
That's true.
And probably going, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Are any further questions for the petitioner? Apparently not. You do have lottery rebuttal time, and we'll call you back up at the conclusion of the hearing.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify in this matter? Anyone else at all? Seeing and hearing no one, do you have anything further you'd like to add?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I'll close the hearing and the matter rests with the, with the commission. Ms. Pease has moved. I need a second. Thank you, Mr. Frederick. Ms. Pease, you may proceed with your motion.
Yes, Madam Chair. In the case of two thousand nine dash zero nine seven, the railroad freight shed site plan approval, I move for approval of the site plan as submitted with the following, with the subject to the department's recommendations on page nine of our staff packet. Those are numbers one through five. And I'd like to add a sixth condition, which might need a little help with the wording, but basically it is to designate space and provide bike racks convenient to the main entrances for customer use. And in addition, I would like to offer a finding.
Well, we can do that after, when you speak to your motion.
Thank you. That is my motion.
Okay. All right. Now, would, do you wish to speak to your motion now, Ms. Pease? This would be the time.
Yes, Madam Chair. Before speaking to the motion itself, I just wanted to suggest that the commission approve a finding that differs a little bit from the staff packet finding on page three. The staff packet finding said there is little to no need for pedestrian access to the east and no ability for such access to the north due to railroad tracks. And we did have a little discussion about the grades of Cordova Street and the uses going on in that area. And I say this because in the long term, I think we can anticipate a fair amount of redevelopment and infill in this area east of A Street. I don't have a copy of the downtown plan with me, but in looking at the aerial photo, there is a fair amount of underutilized or vacant land in the area. And the refurbished McKay Building isn't far away. It's quite plausible that at some point in time, there might be additional residential or hotel use down this area. There's that big site vacated by the former native hospital down this area, and that may or may not become transportation-related, but there may be some commercial, hotel, residential redevelopment in this area. So I would like to suggest that we find that it's not possible to know if there will be additional need for pedestrian connectivity rather than say that there is little to no Otherwise, in speaking to this motion, this redevelopment fits in with the intent to make the Ship Creek District a vibrant, commercial center for use by residents and visitors and to tie it to the downtown and the other activity centers in a way that minimizes the need for parking and consolidates parking so that it will become a pedestrian-friendly location. I think the design proposed does the best with a severely constricted space in that it provides a fairly broad pedestrian pathway by removing pedestrian activity up onto the plinth along the north side of First Avenue. And the landscaping in the parking lots is consistent with making it a pedestrian-friendly place, including the designs submitted to us tonight for the benches at the intersection of, at the western parking lot area. So I will be supporting this approval with the conditions best act and the additional conditions and findings so stated.
Okay. Mr. Riddleton?
I'd like to make a couple of small amendments. One is, I mean, the records should show, I think you referred to page nine, and those conditions are on page ten.
I'm sorry. It said page nine at the top, but you're right, down at the bottom, it says page ten.
There you go. Okay. One, and you recognize in your findings to make it more overt, on condition two, it says, would be given the resolved ability to modify, and just add a sentence similar to what is depicted on this color sheet that we received today, however you would refer to it. Then on condition three, add, after pedestrian, add comma, biking and other amenities, or add biking and other. Should we do these one at a time or?
We probably should.
I have one more after this. Do you want to accept those and then hit the?
Okay. The first one was an item two, to add.
Just a reference to this.
A reference to the handout.
Sure.
Is there any objection from anyone to add that? I don't hear any. And then in three, after the word pedestrian, add biking and other. And then it would continue with amenities in the sidewalk area adjacent to West First Avenue.
Correct.
Is there any objection to that? Okay, I don't hear any. Your next proposed suggestion?
This would be added on to the end of the new condition number six and check to make sure this flows with what you said in would be add statement with as much attention to detail as is given to parking for cars.
No, I'm sure that's acceptable to me.
How about you, Mr. Frederick?
Yes.
Now, I'm ready to accept further discussion on the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I guess I didn't really speak to the new condition. And that is, as Mr. Riddleton testified, there is bike use down through the Ship Creek District from downtown. We have bike rentals available to visitors. And certainly, we have heard also that tenants who are employed in this center intend to use bikes. This is, this is great. This is the direction that we want to go. And by providing conveniently located bike racks, we encourage that. But given the constricted parking areas in the plinth, if we don't provide it, we risk discouraging it. So I think this is an important feature to add.
Okay. Anything further? Well, I just want to mention, I will be supporting this. However, I, you know, at some point, there may be a need for some pedestrian facilities along First Avenue, but I cannot see a need at any time in the foreseeable future for there being any pedestrian amenities going up Cordova Street that grade is just too steep for it to be cost-effective or really safe to be putting in any pedestrian amenities going up that route. The money could be better spent. Anyway, there's no further comment. Is there any objection to the amended motion? Hearing and seeing none, that motion is approved as amended. Does the commission wish to take a short break before we get started on our last case?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I wonder if the petitioner would like their plans and binders back for future use?
Okay. Thank you. Does the commissioners to just take a short break before we get started?
Okay.
And when we come back from our short break, I'm going to ask those of you that would plan on testifying in this next case to move up toward the front of the room so we can move the hearing along as quickly as possible this evening. Okay? Thank you. Okay. We're going to be paused till he comes back. Okay. We are back on the record. And the next case on our agenda is two thousand nine zero nine seven, no, I'm reading the wrong one. Let me turn the page. The next case before us is G four, two thousand seven dash one one seven dash two. The petitioner is C and T Construction, Inc., and the request is for conditional use for a PUD. It's in Tender Jewel Ranch subdivision, lot twenty. Could we have the staff presentation, please?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The case number, as you mentioned, one one seven dash two. The dash two is because this is a reactivated application. This case was routed and scheduled before the commission back in two thousand seven. The applicant requested an indefinite postponement at that time. The case has not been heard to any degree, no public hearing, no nothing. Before the meeting even got started, the case was postponed. This is a reactivation of the application. There are some minor changes, some building design changes, the facades, some location of one or two of the buildings on the site plan, but for all practical purposes, it is the same application as was submitted in two thousand seven. And the two thousand seven reports, in case you didn't get that far in the department package, begins on page zero nine two. So everything from zero nine two is the original two thousand seven information. And page one up to page zero nine one is updated or brand-new comments, staff report, et cetera. One hundred public hearing notices were mailed for this item. We've received probably thirty-five or forty responses to the advertising and the public hearing notices. There were some late responses received over the weekend and today. They're all in opposition. I did not notice any that were in support of the application. The Chugiak Community Council and the Birchwood Community Council also submitted comments in opposition to the proposal. For your review and reference as we go through this, there is an aerial on page two of the department report, the property outlined, and then the surrounding neighborhoods shown. There is a site plan on page four. I apologize to the audience that that might be a little difficult to read, but the commission members should have the full-size fold-out version. This is a request for a residential PUD planned unit development in the R seven zone district. Residential PUDs must meet the standards of AMC twenty-one, point five oh, point one three oh, sections A, B, and C. And we'll go through each of those sections very briefly. They're mentioned in detail in the original two thousand seven report. We'll just touch on some, some changes that have occurred in comments since that time. The property consists of one seven-acre lot, zoned R seven. The applicant in proposing a PUD gains a few advantages over the straight R seven zoning. With a PUD, he can provide multiple dwelling units on the one lot without the need to replat. Otherwise, the R seven zoning district only allows one primary structure on any lot or tract. Under a PUD- Under a PUD, the applicant is allowed to increase the density. In the R7 district, the density can be increased to as high as four and a half units per acre. The current proposal is about four and a quarter units per acre. And by having the development, by using the PUD and having the development consist of multifamily dwelling units, the applicant can propose different types of wells and septic systems for use by the development. I'd like to run through the comments from some of the departments very quickly. The current comments begin on page 010 of the report and run through page 025. The 2007 comments begin on page 113 of the report and run through 131. Many of the departments submitted only very brief, updated comments, or just made a reference in their 2009 comments to refer to their 2007 comments, that they had nothing to add or detract from their original review. The Department of Natural Resources comments for this case are that the applicant must submit for a water use authorization prior to using the proposed well on the property. The DOT comments, which are in the package dated June 3, appear to indicate there is not enough information submitted at this time for them to completely review the proposal. The Department of Environmental Conservation will have review authority for installation and separation requirements for the wells and septic systems for this project, and that is because this project will exceed 25 people. It's going to have 30 dwelling units in 15 duplex-style buildings on the seven acres, so DEC will be reviewing this. Nevertheless, we did have the Municipal On-Site Water and Wastewater Division take a look at it as well, and they reiterate their comments from the 2007 application. We also received comments both from the Anchorage Fire Department and the Chugiak Volunteer Fire Department, largely expressing concern with the availability of water to fight fires in this area in general, and with this kind of density specifically. Project Management and Engineering has indicated several areas for improvements, that they will be looking for interior roads on the property as well as access roads around the property. The traffic engineer is requesting a traffic study be done, not enough traffic generation is expected for a real TIA. A traffic study is very similar, but on a smaller scale, and the traffic engineer likewise is looking for any necessary road upgrades or improvements. Regarding the standards, the department originally recommended denial in 2007, and there does not appear to have been any change to the proposal that would have the department change its recommendation for denial. Item A, consistency with the Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Update 2006. The plan calls for a residential density in this area of one to two acres. The applicant is proposing approximately four and a quarter units per acre, and he is allowed to do so under the PUD review. There are, there is a mix of densities throughout the area. Single-family homes are generally the rule. There is one multifamily development. The densities on the single-family in the area and on, and in the multifamily development that's near this property range from one to four units per acre. Some of the smaller, single-family homes are on 12,000-square-foot lots, so they are between three and four units an acre. The other multifamily development that's in the area is at about three units per acre. But regardless, these other developments in the area all date from the late 1970s and early 1980s, so they are grandfathered under a different set of rules. The department concern with this standard is obviously density. The applicant is requesting to go approximately two to four times above what the comprehensive plan calls for, but it is not the density itself that is the issue, it is how you get there. The density bonus of four and a half units an acre maximum allowed is to be granted on the basis of meeting the intent section and the development standards in 215130, and the department does not believe those have been met, and I'll go through those as part of the recommendation and conditions. Item B, traffic access in the standards. Already mentioned that the traffic engineer wants a traffic study for this area. Fire expressed concerns about access to the properties, and PMNE has likewise expressed similar concerns. So basically, what we're looking at from PMNE, traffic, and fire is improvements to the surrounding road network and possible upgrades to the proposed road through the property and the access points to the property from the perimeter roads. Fire departments, Chugiak, and AFD have also expressed concern about water availability for fighting fires. Public services. Item D, water and sewer, not available, obviously. Some of the neighbors have reported slow water well recharge rates. The applicant does have a test hole for water dug in 2007, and it indicates, based on the logs he submitted, flow rate of 20 gallons per minute for up to an hour without severe impacts to the water table he was pumping from. And that rate of 20 gallons per minute is adequate to serve the 30 dwelling units that are proposed as part of this development. Nevertheless, before we can say that standard is fully met, we need to know from DNR that water rights have been established by the applicant for this well at this property. The conclusion I'd like to leave you with before talking briefly about the conditions is that a lot of these items, the traffic, the fire, the well and the septic, those are the technical kind of issues that we often address with a resolved type condition. We don't ask the applicant for 100% of the information upfront. But in this case, these items, as well as the density and the type of development, all have the potential to affect the site design, and a PUD is all about the site plan. We really need more information on all of these areas before we can look with any confidence at the site plan as proposed on page 004. The perimeter roads, the traffic access for the fire department, the location of the well, the location of the septic treatment systems, the fire department's request for a 20,000-gallon above-ground water reservoir. All those items have the potential to greatly change the site design, and the site design is what we're approving, so we need to know more about that, about those issues, before we could recommend approval on this. Because we've not seen any significant change since the 2007 application, the department continues to recommend denial. Item one, the density is two or four times higher than the density called for in the comprehensive plan, and is two to three times higher than most of the general density existing in the area. The density bonus is to be granted for a PUD when the design shows creative use of the land, imaginative architecture, consolidation of open space, consolidation of the building locations, mixing of residential densities and housing types, efficient use and configuration of utilities, et cetera, et cetera. Those are all under item two on page 009. And as just mentioned, some of those technical issues, traffic access, road improvements, fire safety, water well, and septic system impacts have not been fully addressed, or are only partially addressed, and all have the potential to affect the site design. Therefore, the department continues to recommend denial. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Reddleton?
I'd like to comment, a couple of questions. One, I believe you said that there were no comments in support, and I believe there were a couple that spoke highly of CNT's previous projects that were in here.
Right.
A couple of things in here, and you write up on page eight, it says fire hydrants and main lines must be provided within 600 feet. Is that an actual rule, or is that just what they request?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Reddleton, that is fire code before they could recommend support for the proposal.
So if that's not done, then this project can't be built?
Well, the alternative is to build the 20,000-gallon above-ground water tank, so it is not an absolute requirement that they would have to extend the main lines, they could do the water reservoir.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions, staff, commissioners? Apparently not. I will invite the petitioner or its representative to come forward, and if you could state your name for the record, and also, do you wish to reserve some of your time for rebuttal?
Madam Chair, my name is Chris Kenny with Rob Kenny Associates, and I'll be representing the Rattler CT Construction, and I'd like to reserve my time at the end for any rebuttal and discussions.
You may proceed.
I'd like to hold my time for the end.
Excuse me?
I'd like to hold my time for the end.
You may.
Thank you.
Okay. The public hearing is open for additional testimony. As I mentioned earlier, representatives of groups are allowed 10 minutes, I'm sorry, five minutes, and individuals are allowed three minutes. So as you come forward, if you'd state your name for the record, and...
My name is Tom Devine, and I am on the Chugiak Community Council, but I want to be represented as an individual here today, because I want to introduce you, well, I have three kids. Can I get 12 minutes out of this, dear? If I can't...
Well, I'll tell you what, the children can each speak individually and have their own three minutes.
You know what, they were on Channel 2 News never longer than two weeks ago talking about this, doing sidewalk chalk right where the PUD is being planned, so maybe I will have them speak. They'll do a good job.
They absolutely are not just disenfranchised by duty, by reason of their age, so that's their choice and your choice.
Okay, perfect. I do want to take a minute of your time and introduce you to all of my friends and Chugiabellas out here that oppose the project, if they could stand, because they need a special trip in here tonight. Obviously, this could be a long night, three minutes' time, however many people we have. Nevertheless, in 2007, on the Chugiak Community Council, we took time out to talk about this project, and it was voted unanimously 45 to zero to shut it down, to just, you know, not agree with the project. And that's when we were in session. This time during the summer, we don't meet during the summer, we take the summer off, but we can always put together a court committee and talk about whatever issues are important to our, for our local area. This is really important. We put together a petition that I would like to submit, and it has 160 signatures of the community, and what we have been signed is, "I object to the development proposed by CNT Construction of 30 duplex units on the corner of Needo's Loop and Wildwood Drive in Chugiak, Alaska." For the reason, streets cannot accommodate the traffic. We have a very narrow street on Needo's Loop. There are no sidewalks, there are no street lamps, and there's really no way for kids to walk to the school bell stop at the end in the middle of winter, when the snow and the ditches are filled. So I know John talks about having it available for seniors, but it's no place for seniors or even young adults to be walking around in the pitch dark in half the year. There's going to be a huge impact on our walls, and because we have such low-producing well, and the recovery time is so slow on most everyone in the neighborhood, that under a gallon a minute is what my home is, and it's right across the street from where this proposed development is. So my question is to John or to CNT Construction is, what does it do to the property value of my home? Would I entrust the city? Did I pay my property tax every year, when I can live in a rural community with almost an acre of land, in a nice little, you know, walking down the neighborhood, meeting the folks, walking the dog, and then we have 60, 70 more cars a day screening down Needo's Loop and Wildwood? This isn't why we buy homes out there. We don't live in Needo River. We don't live in Anchorage. We live in a rural community. These high-density homes, you know, 30 units on seven acres, if you see the little rectangle where he proposes...
We do, we have a map.
It just, it just is so dense that it doesn't even seem reasonable.
I need you to sum up, because your three minutes are up.
Well, you know what, I could use 30, but it's, I'm not going to get it. So nevertheless, I just, I know that this gentleman over here did a great job talking about what the planned urban development will do, and you have the packet. I hope you read it. I hope you understand how it affected our community, and thank you for your time.
Okay, do you want, do you wish to turn in your petition? And do any of these young ladies wish to offer comments this evening?
I'm bringing that up there. I'll be bringing that up there, too. There we go.
Thank you very much. Madam Secretary.
Are we supposed to introduce ourselves, or just...
Yes.
My name's Mary Hallnuthen. And I purchased my home on Wildwood Drive in 1982. It's kind of funny, now, from South Anchorage, there was nothing out there, and people complained about services. We had to go down little dirt roads like we do where we live now. That's pretty much where we live at in that area, just because it was a quiet little rural area. I noticed that somebody's done a really great job of comprising all this information, where I don't see the mention of nitrates in the grounds and, you know. I'm sure you guys are familiar with them. When you reach a certain level, and there's 10 parts per so many millions, the meaning that you, or the city won't, I guess the numbers won't remain on the property, and so you can't sell your home. There's already many homes in the area, about seven, eight, nine. Two years ago, when they started this project, we, Mr. Thompson and the others, we really got a lot of information on nitrates. And when I bought my home in 82, I think there is a whisper of it, but back then, they didn't really have to do big disclosures, so over the years, and just recently, being in the real estate business, I've come to know that people that have nitrates can't get financing on their homes. People don't want to buy them, it's a stigma. Another thing is, that we do live out there because it is a quiet rural area, and people do speed down the roads, and the neighbors go out and yell at them, but I think that the increased traffic is really going to be detrimental to the area, to the children, to the wildlife that lives there. And I see that also, when we talk about the positive comments that came in from people, I don't know if I can say this now, but the two that I'm aware of, the only two that I'm aware of that came in, maybe there was some that came in later, one is from a local title representative in New England, and the other one is from a local appraiser. Neither of them live in the area, they're not familiar with what we do there, and they really don't care about us, and I don't think Mr. Thompson does either. And this is my location for a senior, senior apartment complex, which is, I heard my mention about either, that when it was first proposed, that was the thing, that it was going to be for seniors, it's close to the senior center. There's no services, there's no doctors, there are no stores, you know, there's a couple of little quick stops, and there are no services, and it's just, I just don't think it's a good location for it. And I do think it would be way bad for the people that live there, and have lived there for years. Thank you.
Who has a question for you?
Sorry?
Hi, thanks. You mentioned the nitrates, and our packet does talk about that there are high levels and...
Okay. I think the only thing that I thought... I think the only thing that I thought else, maybe that when you did the review, it wasn't mentioned, and I think that the people out there know that their issues are being addressed, and it was in the packet, you're absolutely right.
So, well, I have some questions on that, because it did not address, but what is the source of these nitrates, and is it causing you any problems?
Well, you know, I don't know. When I moved there in 83, there was an issue, but what I've been told is that it's, the soil's been saturated, or different things. But I guess what I would say, in my experience, is that the more septic you get, the higher the nitrates in the area. And on the map, if you look at our area, the nitrate map, I know you guys have it, it's huge in our area. I mean, it's right there on another street. So I think, I'm not an engineer, I've been told that baby mothers, nursing babies shouldn't drink nitrates. I mean, I've heard the good and the bad, and some people think they're just fine, but I think there must be something wrong, and when the municipality flags you, "Well, the nitrates are doing high, we can't get financing." So we really want to say, "Okay, we're no big deal, whatever." There must be something to it.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yes ma'am?
I guess I'm next. My name is Claire Conley, and I live out in Chugiyak as well, on Sherman Street, which is the next street over from Needo's. And my comments are pretty much the same as Tom's in the areas, in that there's too many nitrates. The streets just are not made for all the cars going up and down. I have 6 kids out there, and we learn up and down that road, we bike up and down that road, we go to the baseball field, we like to be able to just walk places. And if there's 13 more, you know, dwellings right across the street from me, I'm not going to be able to walk up and down that road, you know? My kids aren't going to be able to walk up and down safely, and I don't want the roads being improved either, you know, to the effect that they, that they'll do is they'll, they'll say, "Okay, we're going to widen the roads," and then they're going to take my property that I've been paying property taxes on for the last 15 years, they're going to widen the roads. You know, this, this has got to stop. This has got to stop, this moving in and disturbing everything, because, you know, it could happen to any of you people next, you know? It could be in your backyard next. You know, we don't want all these high-dense workplaces, and the city coming in, or the state or whoever does it, and just, you know, rezoning everything, or whatever the term is, I don't know if that's the correct term, but they'll say, "Okay, well then I guess, you know, if the roads can't accommodate it, well then we just need the roads widened." Then they're going to take my property and my neighbor's property and widen the roads properly. I've been paying taxes on for years, you know, and it's just not right. It's just, it's got to stop, you know? I have 6 kids, like I said, and I have 4 of them here, and they're all going to sever me to pieces then, if that's out.
That's absolutely all right. Okay, so just tell us your name.
Hi, I'm Amy Conley, and I have been living on Sherman Street. I'm alive from what I know, and our friends have arrived, they're right across the street from us, where I was biking up and down that street. And if there's 30, whatever amount of cars going up and down, it's going to be pretty much impossible for us to go down, and we're like best friends with them. Everyone in their family has an inch that is left in me, and so we're riding along those cameras.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Michael Conley, and we need to go now because we need to have a backup, and I'm not trying to be like tall, coming up, and I need to sleep, because I'm in traffic and this, and we just need to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Michael. How old are you, Michael?
I'm 7 years old.
Okay, thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Paul Vayana. My wife and I live on Daniel Court, which is, I guess, 1 street over from there, this planned development is.
And so, what were you reading again?
Paul Vayana, he is in Victor, AO, NA. My wife and I moved there a few years ago. One of the selling points is the community. It was zoned R7 for a reason, there was a plan, and it stayed that way for a very long time. I guess my question is, why? Why do we need this? Why? You know, the idea is, and then to come out, I guess, is altruistic, that this is going to be a senior housing. Well, it's not going to be senior housing. Is it available to seniors? Do they have to make it so that seniors are accessible? Yes. But in reality, there are 30 seniors that are looking for these homes. I don't think so. We don't need it. So the question is, why? Why is it? And the question is, why do we need it? What good is it going to bring us? And I can't find anything, and neither can, I think that's the issue that we all have, is we can't see a benefit to the community, the people that live there. You know, currently live there, we can't see a benefit. All we see is a detriment. Traffic, everybody talks about traffic. By profession, I'm the firefighter paramedic, I don't represent the Chugiyak Fire Department, but I will tell you this, traffic is going to be an issue. You're going to see accidents, not just on Needo's Loop. When Needo's Loop connects into the old Stewart Highway, comes around a blind curve. Now you start putting that much traffic in that area where you have this blind curve, you're going to see an increase in accidents. You know, we have a road that doesn't have sidewalks. We don't want sidewalks. That's why we don't live in Eagle River, that's why we don't live in Anchorage. So we're going to put in a development that's going to increase traffic on a road that can't take it. The roads are now, can't deal with pedestrians and traffic at the same time. Rail issue, we talked about rail issues before. You know, the test that they do is a static test. He puts it on there, it flows, we call it good. What they haven't dealt with is what happens when 30 people flush the toilet at the same time? Okay? What happens to all rail pressure when 30 people flush the toilet at the same time? Septic system. Nitrate, there's a lot of different reasons. It can be just a natural source of high nitrates. One of the standards that is commonly accepted has to do with, a lot of it is the race, the septic systems. I can't speak to that because I'm not an expert. I know it is commonly accepted in many cases. Again, we moved there for a reason, it was zoned R7 for a reason. There's no reason to change that. To accommodate high-density housing, for what reason? What is that going to do to our, to our home, to our community, that we have to live in? Let's face it, as soon as CNT Construction, I guarantee you, before he isn't finished, that property will be sold, he will take the profits from that one. And I'm not, I'm not faulting the man for wanting to make money. I, that's, I'm a capitalist like anybody else. But we can't do it in such a way that it hurts the community. He's gone. As soon as he's finished, he packs up, takes the profit, he moves on to another development, and he continues to make money. I wish the man well. I just don't wish him to do so at the detriment of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Just a minute before you come up, ma'am. The woman that was up here before with her 2 children, there was a question for you, ma'am, and I didn't acknowledge it. Or was it one of the children you had to...
No, it was for Mrs. Conley.
Mrs. Conley, okay. Ms. Pease had a question for you.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to hear your description of the way the roads are now, and someone brought us a photo, which is pretty illustrative, but I just wanted to hear your description for the record as to how wide they are, and whether the vegetation is up to the edges, whether there are any kind of shoulders, whether you can see houses, whether there's parking along the street, that sort of thing.
Well, I don't know exactly how wide they are, I didn't know footage was, you know, Tom. I don't know, I don't know how wide they are, but there's some vegi...
24 to 26.
Oh, please. Okay, yeah, they're 24 to 26 feet wide, I guess. And then there's a little bit of vegetation, where there's really no room for parking. I mean, you could park there, you know, for 10 or 15, 20 minutes or something, but you can't really just park along the roads like you see in the city. There's no, there would be no room for sidewalks.
Ditches.
You know, there's some ditches there.
Okay, yeah.
We don't want sidewalks either, because like I said, I don't want the, if they did put sidewalks in, then they'd have to encroach on my property and everybody else's property that we've, like I said, been paying property taxes on. And I don't want my property being taken away so that somebody can make, you know, a buck. Like the other guy, I'm not opposed to somebody making a buck, but I don't want him to make a buck at my expense. You know, that's just not right.
All right. And if I may follow up, are most of the streets sort of tree-lined and rural-looking, or is it lawns and parking right up...
No, no, they're tree-lined.
Okay.
Yeah, they're pretty much trees all around the streets. And you can, some houses you can see, you can see my house, you know, from Stark Mountains, but some houses you can't see it. I'll give you an example. When we moved out there 15, 14 years ago, and we bought our house in the summer, and we looked at houses in the summer out there, and we didn't know we had neighbors behind us because there were so many trees. And then of course, in the fall, when the leaves fell, we saw that there was my houses there.
Okay. Thank you for that description. And here they brought the picture, that gives us a good visual image of Ms. Wells.
Ms. Wells, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming back up.
Thanks.
Yes, ma'am, it's your turn. If you could state your name for us.
My name's Susan Gacy, and I live on Needo's Loop. I've lived there approximately 20 years. We have really slow rail recovery. We haul our drinking water. We are on septic, too. We have no fire hydrants close by. I think it would probably be the elementary school, which is quite a ways away for, in case of fire. We enjoy these children running up and down the road, riding their bikes, rollerblading on a daily basis in the summer. I don't think where I live that 2 cars can pass without one stopping so the other one can go by. It's tree-lined and lawn. In the winter, when the snow's there, the snow plows piled up, you have to, I'd say 1 car on my road coming up the hill there. We really object to this. There are so many reasons we don't have streetlights. We enjoy our neighborhood. I had a bear in my life recently called the neighbors to let them know. We communicate with each other. I just don't think it's, for the future, I can't see adding another 30 homes in this area. We'd really like you to think about this before you do it. It's not smart. We need the green space, and we enjoy it.
Just a moment, there's a question for you.
Yes.
Ms. Pease?
Yes, dear Chair, with regard to your hauling your drinking water, is that because you have insufficient flow, or do you have nitrate concerns? And if you do, do you have any measurements?
We have insufficient flow, plus our water has an odor to it, so we do haul for that reason. We, actually, today we haul them water to wash, water our trees and shrubs that are established that are in bad shape, because we can't use the water that way. We have to plan what we do. We have, we can survive on what we have, and we're fine with that, but to decrease it anymore with adding more wells in the area, I think it would, we would probably have to move, I'm afraid, so.
Okay.
Thank you. We love what we have, though, and we're willing to live with reduced usage of water. I think we all should think of that, but we do need some water.
Thank you. Just a moment, there's another question for you. Mr. Reddleton?
Hi, thanks for coming in. You had mentioned that, you used the phrase, "we need the green space." So now, if this were developed at normal R7, which under the current regime would be 40,000 square foot lots, would that be a problem?
I think we could work with that. If, you know, we're not trying to stop what's going on, as long as we go by the rules and regulations here. But to crowd 30 families into this area, it's unheard of. It's, you know, we need the space. We enjoy, the elementary school is there, and I can't imagine seniors in that area, I can't imagine them walking down the road to get to where, I'm not sure, maybe to the senior center. The only time I see the seniors actually out walking at the senior center, there's a nice walkway that goes down to the post office or to the elementary school from their home. But yeah, I think that the actual, going by the rules and regulations, the R7 would be adequate. I just don't think we need to change that.
Since you mentioned the senior center, in our packet, there were 2 different numbers. In one point, it said it was about a quarter mile to the senior center, and somewhere else, it said 3/4 mile. And is it, which side of the Glen Highway is that on?
From the New Glen Highway. Between the New Glen and the Old Glen on Birchwood is the senior center, and it would be on the west side of the High, Birchwood.
So the opposite side of the Glen Highway. So you...
Yes.
And about how far away would that be?
3/4 to the...
3/4, sorry.
Yeah. And you would have to cross that Glen Highway. There's no, to get to the senior center, if you, if you were a senior living there, there's no stoplights. I go down probably 3 to 4 times a week with my granddaughter, who's 2, and take her to the elementary to play, and we have to time it to get across the Old Glen to even, you know, safely get across there, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Yes, sir.
I retired from the Air Force June 1970 at McCord Air Force Base. I drove through Tacoma and Seattle in about 1,500 miles of dirt road to get the lot 19 in Chugiyak. I started building a home there in August, and I've lived there ever since. This new construction will be my next-door neighbor. If I had wanted to live in a congested area, I would have stopped in Tacoma or Seattle, they're a lot closer to Disneyland, and it cheapens a lot. Living there would be a lot cheaper. I hate these kids. I hold my breath when I see them go down that road to school in the wintertime, where somebody's going to hit them, as it is now. I can't envision the traffic if you add 30 new residential places out there. I just went through the paperwork here. I noticed his well, who drilled by the son of the guy that drilled my well, and they're about the same depth. So I have a real concern that he's in the same water for I'm in. Also, his blueprints shows his septic system, one of his septic systems would be pretty close to building the lot line there, and my well would be awful close. So I have a lot of concerns. They're upgrading the old highway there next year, so traffic is going to get thicker just from the fact that the highway is going to be improved. They put many new bridges across Peters Creek, so instead of driving 50 through there, they're going to be driving 65. And like I say, I'm really concerned when I see these kids. And you asked about roads. In the wintertime, when they plow the snow, they'll pull the ditches in the spring, and it's slippery and snat when things start thawing, and people sliding into ditches.
Could you sum up for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. Just, I'm really against them building there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions, commissioners? Apparently not. Thank you, sir, for coming out this evening.
My name is Deborah Jones.
Just a moment. Go ahead and come up in the front row, and then you'll be next.
My name is Deborah Jones. I live directly across the street from this planned development. My well is downhill from his lot. I own my water rights. We have water rights for our lot and for the lot next door because of the constrictions of well and septic. We provide her water. I'm really concerned. His well for 30 families, and our little well across the street that has to provide for... for two is gonna be impacted. This isn't what I envisioned when I bought a property. We lived in purgatory for seven years. We lived in a condo development, and I considered them purgatory. I moved out here because it was rural, it was nice, I know my neighbors, I see the kids ride. I worry about them too when they go to school in the winter. I see the little reflections on their backpacks. Please don't let him do this to our neighborhood. I know the man has a right to make money, but he doesn't have a right to ruin a neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Are there any questions? Apparently not. Thank you very much, Ms. Jones. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Isabel Williams. I've lived in this neighborhood for about a year now, and already we've lost water like three times, probably, just for a little shortage. It happened this past week, too. And I can't imagine if there's another, those condos next to our neighborhood showing water with us, then we would lose water a lot more, and we would have to store even more water than we have to store now, just in case we lose water for more than a couple days, which hasn't happened yet, but it could. And also, if there's a lot of cars around in the highway, then it would be harder for us to walk down to the bus stop, and we're gonna have to, like, watch out more for cars, which will be a lot harder. And when a lot of bikes to a friend's house, then it'll be more hazardous because there's gonna be maybe thirty more cars around, and we're not gonna be able to ride safely on the bikes or rollerblading or whatever, skateboarding or anything like that. Yeah. We could have moved to Anchorage, because that's where my mom works, but we moved here because we didn't want to live in a very crowded borough, and it would have been much more convenient to live in Anchorage because it would be much closer to my mom's work, and maybe schools closer by, and it would just be easier to live in Anchorage. But we decided to go to Chuyac just because we didn't want to live in that crowded urban area. So I just think that it would be a better idea for pretty much a lot of reasons to not build condos in our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming out to testify today. We appreciate it a lot.
My name is Tom Convy. I live on Sherman, which is on the backside of this planned development. My concern really is the traffic. People have been seeing thirty cars for, you know, with thirty condos there, it's gonna be more like sixty cars. And they're gonna go out, and they're gonna come back in. So really, how many cars are getting by my house, additional cars every day? Probably a hundred and twenty or more. I live right now on a dead end street, and there's two houses past me. One of them is a rental, and I find people, believe it or not, speeding by my house at thirty and forty miles an hour. I've got six kids. Every time they go down that driveway, I'm sweating. I'm wondering, is some fool gonna come by and run my kid over? Because I do know they're going by at thirty and forty miles an hour. We've talked to them. And a couple times we've talked to them, we've got really hostile results, you know? This development, are people gonna move in, live there for thirty years? Are people gonna be coming and going? You know, because it's more traffic. And it'd be wondering if Joe and Cheryl are gonna move in here, and they're gonna live there, lose their families. This isn't what I hear. What I hear is older people, maybe not, but I hear people coming and going. Every couple years, it's like an apartment complex, you know? I didn't move out there. I didn't pay the money, you know, to live across the street from apartment houses. People come and go. They have their own set of problems with apartment houses. I'm not saying there's not a place in the world for apartment houses, but it's not there. That's rural. That's quiet. The streets are narrow, they're dark. You go down those streets, and a car comes by, and you sweat every time. Am I gonna get hit? I go back to what happened, I'm going, twenty-five years ago, those two little kids walking down the street. I think their mother went on the phone. Mother's against drunk driving because her kids were killed out there on that road. You know? It's not the neighborhood. It's not the place for all this additional traffic. The water, we have to bring our water. My concern is fire. You know, why are we listening to that fire chief? You know, he says it's all these upgrades need to be made. You know, you take thirty units, and that's just the beginning, because I know there'll be more going in. But you take thirty units, hot, dry day, everybody's watering their lawns, the aquifer, aquifer is being used, and a fire starts, and you're being blown. You know, you're running one or two hours down that place. It's really hard to get in and out of there.
Sir, could you sum up for us?
I will. You know, if a fire starts, I foresee catastrophe for the people in that particular area. Just like to say, I am definitely against this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have a question for you.
I'm sorry.
Mr. Weddleton.
Sir, thanks for coming out. You said that you live on Sherman Street.
Yes.
Now, looking at this map, there's an apartment building. Is that a building that's down the street? But how many people live there?
Well, I'm gonna say there's probably twenty units or better. That's been there a long time. I don't know, you live there anywhere? The guy who built my house actually built that, and that was probably twenty, twenty-five years ago. They have water problems there. They went out of water different times during the summer. But as far as, you know, I mean, that's, they're not going by my house. I do know that people come and go all the time out of that place. There's always places for them.
So is that a problem for the neighborhood?
You know, I don't think it's been a problem as far as the people who live there, but there is the additional traffic. So when I walk down the street and my kids go down the street, we can say you go as far as the apartment, don't go behind the apartment, because you got all that traffic coming in and out of there. And it's scary. There's nothing for kids out there to walk on. You know, I go out there in the wintertime, the roads are icy, and it just takes one car, one car to run that kid over on an icy road. The roads are maintained like they are in Anchorage. After a snowstorm, when they get to you, they get to you. That could be three days, you know? So it's, I don't think the area can stand the additional pressure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Ralph Henderson. Thirty-one years ago, my wife and I bought Lot Twenty-One in Tundra Jewel Ranch subdivision there. And the reason we bought it was because it was just rural, and it was quiet. And I have to agree with all these folks on the traffic. I live right on Wildwood, and there are no speed limit signs on Needles or Wildwood Drive. And traffic runs up and down those roads. Numerous times, I've gone out there into the street to stop people and ask them to please slow down. And the kids are riding their bikes up and down there, and the people are walking, and they have their, walking their dogs. They come around the corner at Needles and Wildwood, and I've seen them doing rubber there, and just, and they use that as a raceway, both Wildwood and Needles. And also, I've got, I'm just across the street from the well that they drilled in there. I'm in the same aquifer. I know, because when he drilled it, I went over and talked to the driller. So I know the depth, and I know just, and so I'm concerned with the water problem, also the aquifer. I think that sums it up. Thank you.
We have a question for you.
Yes.
Mr. Weddleton?
So you, do you have water well troubles?
No, I don't.
Okay, because the petitioner said that his well...
I'm one of the lucky few that don't.
Petitioner's well, he said that he got twenty gallons per minute. Are you roughly in that range as well?
Yes.
Okay, right. How's your nitrate level? Do you test that?
It was very, very, very minimal.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kristin Valona. I'm a chemist, microbiologist, degrees in a few different sciences. I'm looking at the website, www.epa.gov, which gives some information on the nitrates. I believe there's some questions from there. Just want to quote some of that. Primary sources of organic nitrates include human sewage. Excuse me. And the EPA standards are ten parts per million for the nitrates, one part per million for nitrites, and in our bodies, we convert the nitrates to nitrites. And there's something else I want to quote for infants, which a lot of us have growing families. What are the health effects? Short term, I'm a science person, I'm not, used to being in front of people. Short term, excessive levels of nitrate in drinking water have caused serious illness and sometimes death. The serious illness in infants is due to the conversion of nitrate to nitrite by the body, which can interfere with the oxygen carrying capacity of the child's blood. This can be an acute condition in which health deteriorates rapidly over a period of days. Symptoms include shortness of breath and weakness of skin. Long term, nitrates and nitrites have the potential to cause the following effects from a lifetime exposure at levels above the maximum contaminant level, which is the ten parts and one part dialysis, increased starchy deposits, and hemorrhaging of the spleen. So we are talking some serious health effects there. Thank you.
Thank you. Could I only ask what your last name is, ma'am?
I'm sorry, Kristin Valona.
Okay.
V A L N A.
Thank you so much, and thank you for coming forward. Okay, the next person.
Hello. I'm Thomas Lewis, and we own the property directly in front of this proposed site, the church there. And our concern here is where the well is put in. They say it's a test well, but it's an actual, actual well, but it has not been approved by the city near D E C that we know of as of today. And the radius of that well will compromise our piece of property, at least two acres there, as far as if we were trying to develop that particular piece of property, we wouldn't be able to do what we want to do because of that well, our radius in that area. And so we stand with the community to oppose this development. And when we talk about no sidewalks, there are no sidewalks, even our property, as we own the whole piece on the other side, there are no sidewalks, there's actually ditches. So you have to walk in the street to go down the road, and then there's cars coming down the road. You actually have to move over, stop in front of the car to go past you, because you can't, it's just that no other road there. And it is important for us to be able to do what we have designed to do in the community here, not is to live peacefully and live together and enjoy it in the area. And so we stand against the proposed property here and the development in which they are trying to do on this particular piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Did the next person come forward? Yes?
And just for the record, we will be turning in a nitrate test on tomorrow. We do the water today, and we'll be taking it to the place to do the testing for nitrates on tomorrow. So we'll have an accurate test this week.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Pat Tilton. I'm a former resident of the subdivision, Dusier subdivision, and lived on Darryl Court. We constructed a house there in nineteen eighty-two. And that particular piece of property, which was a third of an acre, had a very low yielding, low recovery, and also the saturation of our septic systems in the area because of the nature of the lots, I believe, has created this, partly contributed to this nitrate issue. Although I no longer live in the area, I have quite a few of these folks, my friends, from our church time here in that area. We lived there until nineteen eighty-nine, and I just want to speak up my support for the objection to this development. I do believe it would have a serious impact to this core rural neighborhood, and I definitely want to reiterate their concerns for public safety, health. It was mentioned in the reports here, I believe, by the fire department, that they would have to have like a twenty thousand gallon holding tank for water in case of fire. That would be creating additional, in my view, eyesore to the community, because you don't hire the twenty thousand gallon tank that easily. I don't care what kind of landscaping you put around it. I've seen quite a few of those. So just to reiterate, I support the opposition to this project, and I would encourage you to deny the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Would the next person who'd like to testify come forward?
My name is Cindy Carl. I live on Sherman Street. First, I concur with the previous speaker's comments. I'm new to the area, but I used to live in Anchorage, so I have a basis for comparison. Most of my comments will go to the issues that the petitioner has not addressed. First, I got my vibe. The petitioner would reactivate his petition without some substantive changes and improvements to his original petition, unless he's just testing to see if they support public opposition to the development. On page seven, the Chuyac Volunteer Fire and Rescue Company pointed out that this style of density of proposed development poses public safety hazards because of the lack of water available to fight fires. Of course, we would urge the Plumbing and Zoning Commission to deny this application. But is the project way too allowed to go forward, the petitioner should be required at a minimum to improve infrastructure to address, to improve the infrastructure by extending municipal water lines and fire hydrants to address the inadequate water supply and the potential public safety hazards cited by the fire department. It is obvious that this P U D would not, only not preserve and enhance the identity of established neighborhoods, but that it would be a complete aberration and have a negative impact on the character of the established neighborhoods in the area. The higher density duplex style development is not consistent with the recommendations and policies contained in the Guidelines for Growth section of the Chuyac and Eagle River Plan, and it totally flies in the face of density requirements for the surrounding area. There are several technical issues, including roads, traffic, parking, inadequate water supply, there are potential safety hazards that the petitioner has not addressed, and there's a lack of cohesive plan to provide supporting infrastructure for the project and the community. The P U D is an inconsistent use in relation to the area neighborhoods and direct contradiction to the Chuyac Eagle River Comprehensive Plan with respect to density, use, and housing type. People elect to live in Chuyac as a priority of life issue. If they are in favor of multi-family overcrowding in our parking roads and water systems and broken visual barriers, they would live in Anchorage. This petition has not changed substantially since two thousand and seven, and we are glad that the department continues to recommend, deny it for a myriad of reasons, the same reasons as it was denied in two thousand and seven.
Could you sum up, please?
We urge the commission to once again deny this petition.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Laurie Krudson-Masburn, and I live at the corner of Needles Loop and Wildwood. My parents owned the property there for about twenty years, and then we bought it from them thirty, or three, three years ago. It's a blind corner there, which is, to get into our driveway, we actually have to come up to a blind corner and then look at Wildwood, make sure there's nobody coming before we go across to get into our driveway. go across to get into our driveway. The property already had right-of-way taken without our, the consent of my parents at the time to make the road wider to make, when they paved that corner, and we really don't want to lose any more right-of-way to have that road improved because of the need, because of the more traffic there. Another thing, and I really agree with a lot of the concerns that were already mentioned, so I don't want to go over those, but the community got together last time, two years ago when this happened, and we all discussed it, and we were prepared to, people came to the hearing, or we were prepared to come to the hearing, and then found out that day that it had been pulled, so, you know, there was a bit of discrediment to find out that the same thing had actually come again when it, you know, we were prepared to deal with this last time, and then it didn't, it was pulled. So, the other concern that I want to mention is that because there is an adjacent piece of property to this one that's being proposed, the other adjacent lot of the same size, that the owner of the lot could say, well, if they're going to do that there, then I could do the same thing on this property here, and that would really be, you know, if you see what I'm saying, that if, if it's approved on this one, then why would that person next to them who has the same size of property could say that they could do a similar project, and how could that be denied if the other one was approved? So that, that's definitely, I mean, I'm not saying that they have any intention because I don't know, but it just definitely leave a possibility there for, that's a concern. So, that's all I had to say.
Okay. Thank you. Yes? Yes, is there anyone else that would like to testify? Anyone at all? Those of you that want to continue to testify on this case need to come down front, because I'm not going to wait between people. Yes, Ms. Wells?
Good evening. My name is Bobby Wells, I'm representing Richard Community Council. You have, I believe we made written comments, you should have a copy of those, I see all the packets have gotten up there, so I don't really know what you're looking at. I would like first off to make the comment that C and T Construction and Rodney P. Kenny Associates are fine individuals, have a good reputation. I can tell you that P U Ds or P C's are acceptable when you have urban development with a thorough range of necessary infrastructure, but that is not the case here. It is our seven-seventh property, Chuyac Eagle River Topland map says one to two dwelling units per acre. This is rural area, limited infrastructure. You take the neighborhood into consideration, if this was approved or anything, and John made reference to this, is if you don't allow him to do this, he's just going to put in a 13-year old apartment house. I think that's kind of bad idea, so. Mr. Tilton, in regards to, we asked about that apartment house, one of the things that is different is that fronts directly onto the old Glen Highway. Get right to the meat of it, there are no sidewalks or pathworks to ensure safe pedestrian passing of the old Glen. You'll also notice there are no sidewalks within the complex of this P U D. It's reasonable to assume any senior living there would want to partake of activities at the Chuyac senior center. We have no grocery stores or other large retail shop in any area. Our public transit system does not function well and is often the first cut in budget crunches. There is no onsite snow storage. In regards to the map, the, excuse me, the picture that I handed to the chair and got passed on to Commissioner Pease, I, that is my big car on that street that is Needles Loop. We're looking less towards the, what we call video corner, the corner of Old Glen. I placed off the width of that paved road, it's 24 feet. I would say there's 28, it's, the right-of-way width is 24 feet. I placed staff 18 feet of pavement. You have ditches on both sides. This is where the snow storage, if there's no onsite snow storage, when you hear these people saying there's no place to walk, this road was developed to a country name standard some time ago. It's probably one of the older areas. There's electric, bettering to protect the adjacent real properties. I don't think that Mr. Thompson meets the requirements mandated for usable, open space by the residents. Current roads are narrow, the local roads are narrow. I went out there, to refresh my memory, this weekend after going to Delphi, and I drove those streets and talked to some of those neighbors. So I covered Baghead, I covered Sherman, I covered all of Needles Loop, I made some across runs, and I sit over at the senior center and observed if there was any traffic coming across the old Glen, foot traffic, there is not. I'm not familiar with the material quality in that area. Anyone with any kind of geological background also knows that nitrates are naturally created, you'd have to have a base level. However, because these people have lived here a long time, many, many of them prior to being rezoned in 1985, I'd hit the road for it. Because of the concerns the development presented, I don't think you can adequately mitigate the negatives created at this density and the various other items that have to be mitigated. Richard Council recommends you do not grant this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me see if there are any questions for you, Ms. Wells. Are there any questions for Ms. Wells? Ms. Pease?
Yes, just to be clear, the Needles Street is the picture you showed us, and you're saying that's 18 feet strip paved in a 24-foot right-of-way, that's all there is?
I think there's a 25-foot right-of-way because there's a drainage ditch, you'll see that on the left limit, and that is exactly where the property is that, that C and T wants to develop. If you could, if you look down at the end, you're looking less towards video corner, and the ditch and the right limit doesn't appear to be used throughout. I believe when I, so you say, I was through there, I think they've just been back, and use those drainage ditches for snow storage. You might lose the question of the people onsite, are they going to haul this snow? What do they intend? Within that development itself, I think they have 30-foot roads, I'm not really sure, you'd have to check that.
Okay. And if I may, Ranch Road or Wildwood Drive, some of the roads that might be access roads, are they any wider, a little wider? How do they compare?
No, that's about the same. The one thing that is different, I noticed on Baghead, there are some of the homes that are more visible, meaning that is heavily vegetated. I tried to make my, determine whether they take that picture to be representative of the whole area, which is one photograph, but they don't, there are homes you can't see right from the road, so it gives the appearance of something wider, but I didn't place off that. Thank you.
Mr. Tilton?
Actually, just to clarify on that a bit, looking at these plans that we have in our packet, they say it's a 30-foot easement for the roads, and it looks like that's Needles and also Wildwood.
So do you suppose, say, that they'll be staying, just moving back within that division? Excuse me, within that, within John's development there? If they're moving back on 30-foot inside that P U D, does that mean the snow storage is going to stay on site? And then where your senior is going to act, actually to get out to the road of the picture that I've just handed you guys?
I'll pass that question on.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Wells. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, my name is Cindy Valona, and I'm against this P U D housing. We bought this, our house, five years ago, and we bought it for the community and for the neighborhood. We could have picked Eagle River, we live in Anchorage, we live in Eagle River, it's getting too populated for us, and we like Chuyac. We've been in this state for 17 years, and we have friends out in Chuyac, and we decided to move out there. We do have a low-producing well, I'm worried about our water, I'm worried about the safety of my children, I do live on Needles, it would be right across from my house. I'm worried about if I'm going to sell my house, I'm also worried about the resale and where our property go down in value because of the pet housing. I don't believe it should be in that area, that severe area. It's not a, a city area. There's condos in Eagle River that are for sale, going up for sale, and will continue to be for sale, and no one is buying them. So why does John want to go back in Chuyac, on Needles Loop? I just don't see the reason for it. The roads, again, as you've heard over and over again, I don't feel they're wide enough or justify the traffic that will be coming along. We don't have sidewalks, we don't have curbs, our children walk to the bus stop at the end of Needles and Old Glen, and there's a gentleman's bed before Barry's house, it comes, goes the incline, and then if you're not going slow enough, which a lot of people don't, you can slip right through that stop sign and go to the Old Glen Highway. And now that they're going to be riding that, the traffic will be much more dense on the Old Glen, and the slippery ice in the wintertime, which goes into spring, and there are a lot of trees, so the ice does stay on the road a lot longer than most places. So I can just see with the more traffic and the children, just more accidents. If you're walking in the road, if you're driving on the road, I just see more accidents. I just, we went through this two years ago, it was declined. I just wish you'd think about where we live and why we'd move there. And it was just a start, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is Mark Carlisle, and I live on Sherman Street, and I totally disagree with the condos, and I think that they will, they'll have people out of the neighborhood and make it more quiet, but then more people will come into the condos, and then it'll get much louder and make it more unsafe for people to, like, when I walk down to my friend's house, I don't see that many cars, but if there's condos, there will be an increase of cars, and it'll be much harder for people to move around the neighborhood, and it'll be much more unsafe. I very much disagree with the condos.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming out tonight, Mark. We appreciate your testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Sally Tilton, you heard from my husband earlier. We lived there in the neighborhood for a while back in the eighties, and built a home, our first home. Many of these people are friends and acquaintances, and as you've heard, that many of them have lived there for many, many years, which is an indication that they love their neighborhood, love their home. Something that I haven't heard mentioned, and it may have nothing to do with anything other than that it is being labeled a senior citizen condominium complex, and yet there are, right there in the area where we have a very fine senior center, and there are apartments there, there's also units there for assisted living. There are, there was a piece of land, heritage land, bank land, that was actually, there's a petition, I don't know how that all turned out, but there was seven acres there to expand some, use that for senior living also, right there in that complex, that would be quite convenient. There's another piece of property right there on the corner, that's right across from the post office, it's been there for sale for quite a number of years, and you haven't looked up the land value maybe, but that seems like a more convenient place also, if we want to, you know, make it available, more homes available for the senior population out there. So I'm not quite sure why this particular piece of land was selected. It is not appropriate. This, again, is not a neighborhood that is meant for high-density dwelling, and I oppose, and I hope that you will oppose it until further plans have been made to compensate for the disruption that this complex would make for this small community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to testify? Anyone at all? If there's, this would be the last chance for anyone beside the petitioner to come back up. Anyone at all? Seeing and hearing no, are you coming up to testify, sir? Okay, then I will invite the petitioner. Does this young lady want to come up?
No.
No, okay. Then I'll invite the petitioner to come up, and you have your entire 10 minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Kevin, do you want to come up with that? I do have an overhead here.
Just a minute, we have to turn that on.
Do you want it to the board? Yeah, give it to the board, please.
And if you could state your name for the record again?
My name is Chris Kenny with Rodney P. Kenny Associates, and I'm representing C and T Construction. That's upside down to us. Thank you.
Okay, you can go ahead.
There have been a lot of good comments, and I think Mr. Barrett has addressed most of them. Our intent is to meet Title 2150-130, and it does state that our sevens can have up to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. This map area, view of the area, shows the proposed side area. It also shows the condominiums that Mr. Tilton had talked about, the condo units. We went out there and counted them today, I think we're to the backside, but it's my understanding now, that there's 20 units, which would double the dwelling units per acre there. There's four to the south, and those are 0.91 acres there. Also, what Ms. Wells indicated, that they indicated as the video corner, over here by Needles Loop and the Old Glen Highway, that has 11 units there, plus a shop down here. And the distance from the piece of property that somebody had mentioned earlier indicated that the distance from the property to Old Glen Highway was three-quarters of a mile. That is incorrect, 660 feet approximately, which is about an eighth of a mile. And to the other side of the highway, you have the senior center, so you have 150-foot right-of-way, so, about 900 and some feet to the senior center. It's not, it's less than a quarter mile to the senior center. The right-of-way was addressed later tonight, and it was mentioned that it was a 30-foot right-of-way. If you can look in the package on page 223, there's two 30, it's a 30-foot to the south, 30-foot to the north, so it's a 60-foot right-of-way. We're in agreement with the, with the staff that there's probably need to be a traffic study, the fire issues looked at, either a water line, but possibly a 20,000-gallon tank. The 20,000-gallon tank, there's mentions of the size of a 20,000-gallon tank. A 20,000-gallon tank would be approximately eight feet high, 15-foot radius, that'd give you 20, which would be the equivalent of one of the units in the, in the area that are planned there. So the developer would have to probably move one of the duplexes there. The septic system is being designed by Grand S Engineering, he's an engineer firm here locally in the Anchorage, and it's a new septic system that's been around for about 10 years, and the effluent that comes out of it is less than five per square meter for the nitrates. So the, the effluent going into the, into the soils, the nitrate level is less than the nitrate level that's in the wells in the surrounding areas. So it's putting clean water back into the system. So it's putting clean water back into the system. It's proven.
Okay, the people in the audience need to be quiet right now. It is time to talk.
During the traffic study, the water issues would be looked at and talked about with the PME. We did talk to the driller, and the sevens have put most of the water well systems in, or the wells, in the Eagle River area over the last 35, 40 years. I've looked after myself since 1970. And he indicated to us that we're in a totally different aquifer. I don't know for sure for the gentleman to the east. I would have to look at his well and what we have, but we would present that information to the staff, and MS will do studies and find out if we're in the same aquifer. I'm in agreement that there's water lights and water lights, and to make sure that we're not infringing on anybody else's well. There was mentions about what is CT Construction's past developments. He has three that I don't know of. The first one's been around for about probably 12 years, 10, 12 years, I'm not sure on the exact Rockness Manor. That's in north of the river. Those units come up for sale and sell very fast. It's a very nice, prominent development. The next one is Stone Hill Manor, which is just west of the movie theaters in downtown New River there. And actually, my in-laws own one of them, and they've lived there for a couple of years now. And it's a very nice unit. And his most recent one, but he's just finishing up within the past year, is Rock Cliff Manor, which is on top of Monte, halfway at Monte, just above the Baptist Church there, on the south side of Monte. Those are his most recent planned unit developments that he's done over the last couple of years. And there was a question on it, and what has he done? Very nice units, very nice facilities there. That's about it, Madam Chair.
Are there questions for the petitioner from commissioners? Mr. Weddleton?
Hi, thanks for coming. I actually have a handful, so you might stop me and make the rounds for a bit. One question is, this was pulled in '07, and it's back now. Why was it pulled in 2007?
We felt the timing, the developer thought the timing wasn't in the best interest of him getting it approved, and we wanted to make sure all the, we had the right timing of it. It's just, I didn't feel at the time it would be approved. There was same comments, same denials, but he came back to us about six weeks ago and said he wants to go through wintertime, and I say if we can get pushed through. We meet Title 20, when he said, but we don't meet the comprehensive plan. But in my opinion, we meet the comprehensive plan because in the Eagle River should be a comprehensive plan. Neither in the body of the report does it state that this area is supposed to be one to two dwelling units per acre. The only place that it shows that there's supposed to be that need, or that least amount dwelling is this figure right here. But if you turn in your package to page 37, I'll read it to you. Paragraph five. It says, however, the land use plan up is not intended as a fixed predetermined, predetermination of the land use through 2025. So that scale on that figure is 1 inch equal a mile. And at the beginning, the distance is really critical here in semantics-wise, I guess, because if you scale off at the beginning in Needers Loop Way and the Glen Highway, that little figure there, if you want to place it on the figure here, that's in the planning map, shows a different color, and it shows the color of a residential of 11 to 15 residential units. That figure, but you're not supposed to use it as predetermination of land use. And when I met with the staff two years ago, my first question to the staff, when we met with them before the meeting, was, I asked them, how did you determine number two units per acre? And one of Mr. Barrett's staff members turned to her book and opened up this. To me, that's a predetermination of land use.
We may address that a little more deeply later than so. So this neighborhood system, that, or the septic system?
Yes.
I prefer to it that way. This is fairly new. Are there other examples in the Anchorage area where this is done and it's working well?
I live on the hillside.
With a neighborhood system, not individual on-site?
Individual units, you know, big 4,000, 5,000 square foot systems up on the hillside that are having high nitrate problems. And so these older systems with leach fields and septic tanks are being converted to the system that Jeff Grantus, or Grantus Engineering has. He was supposed to be here tonight to talk about it. But his plans, his conceptual plans are in the package and has been submitted to DEC and has been preliminary approved pending what happens here.
You know, I live on the hillside. I don't believe there are any neighborhood where you would have shared systems like this yet in the hillside.
Individual houses.
Right, now, but you're proposing here, a neighborhood system, where you have 20 homes using one septic system, essentially. Do you know, are there other examples of that in the area that you are?
I do not. Don't know of any other.
Do you have a, do you have any thoughts on the nitrates in the area and what the situation is there?
The well, the wells, the test wells there?
You did have, showed low nitrates, but apparently in the area, there's quite a lot, so...
There is, sir. There's very high nitrates in the lower areas down by the Glen Highway.
Is it poss, and it sounds like the neighbors are worried that if you were to develop this, that you could increase that problem. Is there a likelihood that would happen with your system?
The system that's, the septic system that's would be approved by DEC is, it's a very clean, it's supposed to be able to drink the water that comes out of the, out of the system.
Not me. I have a couple hours, I don't...
Mr. Phelps has questions too, so we'll, I'll come back to you, Mr. Weddleton, Mr. Phelps.
Can you explain for us, or for me, the amount of open space that you have as part of this PUD, and whether or not it meets an MOA minimum of 30%?
Can you restate that question, please?
Yeah. Can you tell me the amount of open space that's provided for in the PUD?
I don't know the exact figure. Al Barrett, Mr. Barrett there, indicated that it's in the neighborhood of 30% probably, setting was, I didn't take, do a takeoff on it, but our intent was to meet Title 21.
Okay, that concludes your questions, Mr. Phelps. Ms. Pease?
Yes, I was interested in your response to a couple of the criteria for conditional, for planned unit development under 2150-130. And that would be the criteria regarding creative use of the land and consolidation of usable open space. In what way is this usable and creative? And the second one would be, how does this enhance the surrounding environment?
I would have to ask the landscape architect to discuss. I'm an engineer, not a landscape architect, but we're trying to keep as much as existing trees in the area without tearing them down. And John does that. He tries to keep as much as a space available without ripping it apart to keep, you know, the natural surroundings and meet a lot of open space. He did this to the last, his last facility, what's the name of it? Rock Cliff Manor. He created a part of it as some green space and plant some trees. It was going to be a lot, but he turned it into more of an open space area for the little cul-de-sac. So I'm not, I'm not up to speed on landscape architecture and that requirement there, ma'am.
All right. And how about the intent of PUDs to enhance the surrounding environment?
The surrounding environment, I actually drove that area, and John Thompson's, or CT Construction's, facilities that he's designed and built have been very nice. And to my, in my opinion, has enhanced the community and area. He doesn't build anything cheap, and he, the facilities that he has is first class. And that's my opinion on the facilities that I've been involved in. And I've already been involved on his last one, but I have ownership in one of the second one.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Any further questions from the commission, Mr. Weddleton?
I want to go down some points that were made in the comments and so on, and just see if these, if these were recommended as conditions, if they would be acceptable to you. And one is a case with a 20,000-gallon tank. Is that something that you would accept as a requirement?
Yeah.
Okay. And then I believe connected with that is you would use that tank to supply three fire hydrants?
Yes, it could be brought down, down the community for the three fire hydrants, yes.
Into your development?
Yes.
Okay, and that's something that you would find acceptable? Okay. In your write-up, you said that you have no plan to put sidewalks within your community there, there along the road. Would you accept putting sidewalks alongside the road?
If the traffic study is felt that is warranted by PME to do sidewalks, I would believe that he would be more than happy to do it. But it would be determined in the traffic study?
Is that a way of a full-blown TIA?
I believe not, it's a shortened version of it. They will meet the requirements that's set forth here in a traffic study, anytime.
Would you, it's a little hard to describe, but looking at your, the diagram here, okay, if you were in any of these homes and you wanted to get to, say, Sherman Street, and would you put, would you be willing to put a pathway between building nine and building 10, say, to lead that way? Or even just towards the west between buildings nine and eight? And that's anticipating future development, but, you know, people do walk, even seniors, and you would shorten any trip if you were just to extend a path there for anyone who would be going south?
By all means, put a pathway there. We did a similar one with Highway Ridge up in New River, across the street from New River Elementary School. We put a pathway, same comment was made, between old subdivision and new subdivision. We created a pathway for better access instead of walking around.
Okay. And then, in the write-up, it seemed to emphasize that this is the intent of senior housing here. And so would you, in doing this, in your, I don't know, CCRs or whatever document, have some kind of age restriction?
I would have to ask the developer that question. He did, all he did was mention that this is, his purpose was, is for senior housing development. When we started this program two years ago, when I backed Mommy Stone Haven there, I was going to buy one of these for my in-laws, but we cut it short, decided not to proceed, and they needed a place to stay. So, and they're 78 and 80, so I would have to ask the developer if he wants to put a restriction in the CCRs. But that, can that be addressed at a later moment? If that's a, yes or no, that would be open by him. I can't make that call.
I don't know. I may recommend it, and we'll see what happens. Would you be willing to post a bond for 10 years for a sufficient amount to allow the well on your property, on this property, to be drilled deeper, or to drill a new well, or use other methods to restore water production should water quantities in the development prove insufficient? And my understanding, your documents here, you're fine to get 20 gallons per minute.
Right.
But I would be worried that if in some time in the future, you don't get 20 gallons a minute, and you have 30 homes on there, and you have these seniors having to haul water, that would be a problem.
That would be a problem.
So would you be willing to post a bond to give some assurance?
That would be another question of the developer there. I couldn't make that call.
Would you be willing to install monitoring wells to monitor water quality on adjacent lots? Could you do that some way where you could tell if there's other aquifers?
We have to, I mean, not be the requirement that I would ask for you to get, or the city to get requirements, because you'd have to get property approval to drill more property, and possibly put a 10-foot, drill it, you know, six-inch hole and drop a monitoring more, you know, it's, has holes in it, but you can monitor the, you know, any kind of levels. I don't know how deep the aquifer is, but I believe it's below 20 feet there. So you'd be drilling 20 or 30-foot holes to get in the aquifer to measure the water table or nitrates, if that's what you're talking about.
So you'd have to go on other property? You couldn't just find the aquifer on your lot somewhere and test theirs?
I mean, you could, but you're going to have issues with PVC piping sticking up all over the ground, and that's not a pleasing sight, some people.
Well, you've got quite a few leach fields showing on here. You're going to have some PVC pipes sticking up all over the place. You better...
But I think you'd do that, you'd put the matter of the wells in there and on various points in the, in the area.
Snow was referred to as an issue. If you do roads similar to the rest of the neighborhood, just shove the snow to the side. Do you have, can you designate an area on here as snow storage? Or could we add a condition that snow will be trucked off-site within three days?
I thought that, I had the plans in front of me, but I thought there was a place designated as snow storage on there.
I looked here, did not see anything specified for snow storage.
There should be, there should have been, and we could, we could represent that.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, because a lot of, you've got several locations for a free leach field, and then you have several backup locations, but you wouldn't want to be storing snow on these leach fields. So it would have narrowed down your sites for snow storage.
Is there a plan to put snow on leach field?
Because then you would bludge your leach field, and it wouldn't function.
It depends on the percolation of the soil.
Well, I understand in this area is a problem. So, I'm not an expert, but I think in general, it's not recommended that you do anything that would get...
Yeah, I can look and then get back to you in a minute.
Okay. That's good, thank you.
You're done. Okay, any further questions of the petitioner? Apparently not. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. The hearing is closed, and the matter now rests with the commission. Mr. Phelps?
In the case of a conditional use for a planned unit development per AMC 21.50.130 A, B, and C in the R7 zone district, I move for the approval of that conditional use.
Okay, and it's been seconded by Mr. Wang. Okay.
Can I speak to it?
Yes, you may speak to your motion.
I don't intend to support my motion. We've heard an extensive testimony this evening from the public. In advance, I heard information from the staff that leads me to the conclusion that the development of this type at this location is ill-advised. It's inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. It's obvious that the inadequate facilities, inadequate infrastructure to form this particular facility. I recognize there's other land uses that are multifamily in nature in this area, but that being said, I think that if this were to be developed in the way described, that it would have, that'd be generally inconsistent, incompatible with the adjacent land uses, which are primarily single-family in nature. I think also what we hear from the community is a general sense that this type of development would not be a benefit to them, and would be inconsistent with their type of lifestyle. And getting also the sense that they are particularly concerned about the safety of their children. So for all those reasons, I would not support my proposal.
Okay, and that motion, by the way, was seconded by Mr. Wang. Mr. Weddleton?
Well, I suppose I'd like to offer a few amendments, if I could take the time.
Okay.
And at any rate, and, and one would be a list of conditions, which I'll try to be brief because of the ones I just, we just discussed. And one would be that a twenty thousand gallon water tank, as requested by the Chugatch Volunteer Fire Department, would be installed.
The, the motion that I have, I'm speaking against my motion, though.
Right, well, I want to, right.
You're trying to then approve the motion?
Well, I want to add some...
Okay.
You moved to approve, and I want to add some conditions.
No, I spoke against my motion to approve it.
You did, yeah. Well, so if it's voted, if the vote comes out that yes, this, I mean, you, you oppose your motion, but if the vote comes out that yes, it's approved, I want these...
Well, wouldn't it force us to have a vote on the motion? And if you ask, you can come back and put the conditions in there for approval?
Uh, well, is it too late to put conditions and after your vote to approve it as it's...
Well, once we vote on the motion, we have voted on the motion. So if we want to amend the motion before we vote on it, just because you spoke against it, Mr. Phelps, doesn't mean that other people might not be in favor of the motion. Yes, Mr. Wang?
Well, maybe we can short-circuit things a little bit, because I seconded the motion.
Yes.
I don't see the foreseeability of building the perfect beast, uh, with amendments. I certainly won't be supporting the motion with or without amendments. Um, I, I, I think there's a fundamental incompatibility because of the density. You know, as Mr., uh, as was presented to us, the idea of a PUD is there's some trade-offs for the density, that you're supposed to get some other amenities or benefits, uh, in terms of design. And I don't see any of those trade-offs or positive benefits offered in what's being proposed, which looks just like, I don't see anything special in terms of open space or amenities that would be the kind of things you'd contemplate as a trade-off for higher density. Um, it, it seems to be totally out of character with the neighborhood. Even though there are a couple of other higher-density developments, they're relatively quite smaller, um, this would be more high-density units in its area, more than double the number that are already in existence. So, I mean, I guess we could go through the exercise of, of modifying the motion, but I think you have two no votes already, so I don't, I don't know that there's a point to that.
Point taken.
Okay, and, uh, that's basically what I was looking for. I don't, I will not support the motion either, so clearly counting votes won't pass. But I did want to send a message, so make notes for when you come forward in two years, that some of these issues should be addressed at that point. And I'd also like to point out, it, we had a case a little bit similar to this. Um, the Heritage Land Bank has some land near the McDonald Center that is generally an R-seven area. And they have proposed for part of that substantially higher density, which is in the form of townhouses, but with significant design standards. And that was acceptable to the community, which is much like this community with R-seven large lots. So you might take a look at the Chugatch Eagle River Site-Specific Land Use Plan, which was just a document from this year, and here's the relevant pages if you want them. So I, for the reasons that, um, Mr. Phelps, or Commissioner Phelps and Wang have said, I would also not be supporting this. And I also acknowledge that the very active Chugatch Community Council has unanimously not supported it. And this big turnout of people, and in fact, when you have people who haven't lived there for twenty years come out and say no to this, that's, that's also very impressive and telling you, uh, tells us something, so, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Pease? Yes, I also will not be supporting this motion, and I would like to state some detailed findings. I think it's, um, important when we issue a denial, to be very clear in our reasons. To be explicit about the density issue, the density would exceed the desired density by two to fourfold. And by desired density, that means both the general established existing density of one to two dwelling units per acre, and also the recommended, adopted, and community-supported density of one to two dwelling units per acre. And, um, the proposed density is in direct contradiction to the Chugiak Eagle River Comp Plan and Land Use Map. And there does not appear to be any impetus for changing that plan. As Mr., um, as the petitioner, petitioner's representative noticed, the Land Use Plan Map is not intended as a permanent predetermination, but it is a, a determination. It is a, you can call it a predetermination, um, to give some people some predictability as to the lifestyle they can expect, the conditions of their neighborhood. And the, um, Chugiak Eagle River Plan says that it may be changed if there would be community-wide benefits, or if there needs to be a response to new issues, needs, or opportunities not addressed in the comprehensive plan. But that doesn't exist here. There has not been demonstrated to be a particular need for this, this type of density or this type of housing. Also, I think we need to be clear that this has not been designated or in any way conditioned to be a senior housing development. A senior housing development has restrictions, age limits on whom they rent or reside there. Second, there are serious unconcerned, serious unanswered concerns about the environmental constraints. Um, neighbors have testified, numerous neighbors have testified that they have low flow wells or low recharge. People are already experiencing periods of dry wells, and people are already hauling water. So there are environmental constraints on the surrounding properties. And in addition, the twenty gallon per minute well for thirty units may or may not be sufficient. Most people in their individual residences want at least a gallon per minute. Nitrate levels are another environmental concern. Um, some nitrate levels in wells we've heard in testimony are rising towards the safe limit of ten parts per million. And we also heard in testimony, and it's, you know, a generally known fact, that nitrate levels do pose risks, especially to, um, unborn infants and, um, young, young children, infants and young children. We also heard the concerns about traffic. There has not been, uh, the required traffic study that PMNE would like for approval. Residents have noted that the existing roads are country lanes, although there may be sufficient right-of-way platted. In fact, uh, there's strip pavement approximately eighteen feet wide, where two cars can't pass in some places unless one stops. The vegetation up to the edge of the road is an important characteristic of this rural neighborhood. Another concern is the fire department concern about access to the site because of the surrounding road network, as well as the onsite access. Fire department has also expressed concerns about the water flow to suppress fires. And finally, I want to raise specifically several points that are not met under Title 2150-130. And that would be Point A, which some of my fellow commissioners have already touched on, that a PUD is intended to have creative use of the land, imaginative architectural design, a consolidation of usable open space and recreation areas, and the preservation of natural features. And the petitioner's representative was asked about that, and, um, neither the testimony nor the application appears, demonstrates that that standard or intent has been met. Also, as far as enhancing the surrounding environment, um, people have testified that they don't see any benefit to their community from this type of developments. In fact, they see quite a number of detriments, so I don't believe that intent has been met. And, um, finally, um, Point Number Five of 2150-130, um, requires maintaining population densities and lot coverage that are consistent with available public services in the comprehensive plan, and that doesn't appear to be met. So I know that's a long-winded list, but it's important when we, um, may be approving, issuing a denial, to be very clear.
Okay. Any further comments by commissioners?
Well, uh, I likewise will not be supporting, uh, the petition, particularly because, uh, it is not consistent with the Chugiak Eagle River Comprehensive Plan. And I want to make it really clear about the issue of the plan map and the fact that it's, uh, it's not intended to be a fixed predetermination of the land use in 2025. That, that plan map and the comprehensive plan can be changed from time to time. But until such time is there changed through a public process, that's the law. And that's what we're required to follow with regard to densities and, uh, the land use patterns in the community and the intent. And even though for a planned unit development in an R-seven district, the density, residential density could go up to a certain level, we have to look at where in the community that R-seven property is located and not just look at that in a vacuum. And so in applying those standards in this instance, and for all the other reasons mentioned by, um, my fellow commissioners, I won't, uh, be supporting the petition. Since we do have objection voiced, we're going to need to use our machines, Madam Secretary. If you'll get it set up for us to vote. Okay. Start voting. I don't... Okay. So, um... Okay. And is it displayed now? Okay. And so that motion fails unanimously. And before we move on to the next items on our agenda, I want to particularly thank all of our young citizens that came out tonight. All of you children that came and sat very quietly throughout our hearing tonight all evening long. I know it's been long and boring a lot of the time, and especially to those of you that came forward to speak. You're very good citizens. And you always can come forward in any public meeting at the municipality or any other governmental body that's having a meeting and vouch your opinion, because your opinion matters. Okay? Thank you for coming out tonight. Okay, we still do...
First, I want to say one thing. I'm really proud of our community. I'm proud of what we've done, and I'm proud we all came together to talk.
Well, all, everyone drive safely going home. Okay. Now, we've still got a little more business to do. Well, it does concern that this is our community.
Well, thank you. And you guys, you not only sat there and got bored, but you got cold. So, that's hard stuff.
Yeah, yeah, welcome.
All right. Do we have, Mr. Barrett, do we have a report from, uh...
Yeah.
The planning director?
Madam Chairman, I didn't even see Mr. Nelson today, but we're going to have a party for him, so I'll let...
When?
Towards the end of the month, I'll let you know.
Okay. Commissioners, I would like to have, uh, a resolution for next week's meeting that we can, uh, pass and present to him, may perhaps at that event. So I'll get something prepared and circulate like I did last time, and then you all can comment on it. And we'll get, get that taken care of. We, I have talked to, uh, the day, uh, inauguration day for Mayor Sullivan, I contacted the new powers that be on the eighth floor and requested a new planning commissioner, since the previous appointment that Mayor Clayman had appointed did not get confirmed.
Really?
And, oh, no, the, the person that he appointed after the planning commission and UDC, the Assembly declined to confirm. So I contacted, uh, the, as I said, the people in, uh, very high up in Mayor Sullivan's office on inauguration day, and I got, uh, an email back the very next day saying they, they had talked with Mayor Sullivan that morning, and he knew it was a very high priority and that they would be getting an appointment for us. I did some creative begging. And said we were in dire need. And, uh, so hopefully we'll have a new commissioner replacing, uh, Commissioner Earnhardt soon. And that's all my news. Anyone else have news? No news. Okay. A motion to adjourn would be in order.
So moved.
And Mr. Frederick Second, I love this, I can see who makes motions right in the middle. It's great for my grandma eyes. Is there any objection? Here and then, we get to go home.
I just threw my instructions away. Oh, there you go, great.